Lori, you're muted. Lori, you're muted.
I get a do-over. Calling the meeting to order, Santa Rosa City School Board of Education on this night in our respective places, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance together. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to say that is really weird. Pledging allegiance to my doorway. We have a very interesting meeting tonight. We have a lot of things to talk about and a lot of hard things to talk about and some hard things to talk about. So just to ground us again, I just want to thank everyone for being here who's tuning in and catching us right now and for our incredible staff and teachers and everybody on the staff and the board members in this time of COVID, and we're just making the road by walking, which is what I like to say right now. So let's start out right away. Report of actions taken in closed session. The board voted in closed session to approve the settlement agreement between Santa Rosa City Schools and Persley. And that was it. And board members, do we have any statements of abstention? Seeing none. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none. We get to move on to high school valedictorian speeches. This is going to be very exciting. And Dr. Kitamora.
Yes, thank you, President Fong. What an opportunity to be able to give our valedictorians and senior class an opportunity to do their speech in front of you because you would have gotten to see them if we had gone to graduation and for all the people tuning in and as a record of our meeting tonight. So Lori is going to be bringing one. We have one speaker that's speaking live tonight kind of come in. And then we have four that are on videotape. And so Lori, which would you like to do first? You want to do the in-person speaker?
Yes, we're going to start with Elsie Allen High School. We're starting with John Letty. And I am going to, he's going to be live tonight. I'm going to promote him to a panelist. And we'll be bringing him in.
Hi, John, can you hear me?
Mr. Letty, are you there? Can you share your video and unmute? Huh? Okay, we're having a little, some technical difficulty.
Give it a second. I do see, just hold on a second. Let me look in the chat.
I don't think those chats are.
No, they don't have.
No.
John, can you hear us? Lori, do you have a contact information for John?
You know, I coordinated this with Mr. Al Bolivera.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and hit the video?
It looks like he's unmuted, Mr. Letty.
Yes.
Yes, hello. Are you able to share your video? There we go. Oh.
There you go. Okay, great.
Perfect.
I had to move to my dad's phone because the computer was not cooperating.
Nope.
For a live.
No problem, no problem. John, welcome. We are so excited. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're very excited to hear your speech tonight. And congratulations on this wonderful honor for you. You've worked hard and we are very, very proud of you. So are you ready to give your speech?
Yes.
Okay.
So first off, my name is John Letty. I am the valedictorian at Elsie Allen High School. To my esteemed classmates, my fellow seniors, and all of our Lobos families. As we have reached the end of our time in high school, we now have a chance to reflect, a chance to look back at all that has happened. I only have one thing to say. Wow. To put it frankly, we drew the short straw. We lost the toss. If high school was a cruise, ours was the Titanic. Things kept piling and piling on top of each other. The hits kept coming. All this had to happen during our time in high school? Yet for all of these opportunities to show character, I am to say we made it. We have persisted through thick and thin to get here, and we are better off for it. Every year, it seems we had a once-in-a-generation calamity. Our sophomore year, we faced a once-in-a-lifetime wildfire which raged through our city. School was canceled and the city shut down. Sports interrupted and homes lost. Yet we persisted. Our junior year, we had the smoke from paradise, again closing school for weeks as the sky blackened with smoke. Yet we persisted. Our senior year was the toughest hill to climb. First, we again had the threat of fires, forcing many of us to leave our homes, followed by a pandemic forcing many of us into our homes. Yet we persisted. Through all in all, we made it. For every hill we had to climb, we also had plenty of valleys. Here at Elsie Allen, we formed relationships and friendships that last long past high school. We also had the chance to learn from a great group of teachers, whether it be Mr. Fleischer becoming Mr. Clean for Picture Day or Mr. Deller showing up to school in a dinosaur costume, whether it be finding out Mr. Carbo roots for the wrong team or learning of Mr. Petty's book eating or having to look up what a heathen means after leaving Mr. Erizavas's class. All of our teachers have given us experiences we will never forget. We were even here to witness one of the greatest moments in human history, when Elsie won a football game. Cherish these moments, remember them. We have come to the end of high school. What comes next? Who truly knows? There are two things I know. First, today's chaos will pass. Things will become normal again. Second, I know we are ready for whatever is next. We have made it this far. Whatever is thrown at us, we say bring it on. We are here to stay. We are stronger than we were before. We are the Lobos. These times are full of challenge, but these times are ours. Make the most of it. Thank you, class of 2020.
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much, John.
Hold on, Lori, don't wait, don't.
I'm not, I'm not moving him yet.
Okay. Any, Lori, do you want to say anything? Or Jill, go ahead.
John, that was fantastic. You got me choked up and fired up all at the same time. What are you doing next year? What are your plans for the fall?
I am planning to attend UC Berkeley with a major in political science. I am hoping that teaching will be on campus. But right now, the UCs are giving a 50-50 or they're going to start it on campus and then take it off.
Well, congratulations and good luck and go Bears.
And John, I do want to say to you, congratulations. I remember when you started at Elsie Allen as a freshman, and I know that you were involved in just about every single thing that Elsie had to offer. So thank you for taking advantage of everything Elsie had to offer, everything that your teachers offered to you for being that really all-around player at school.
Yeah, well, I enjoyed, I enjoyed a lot of it.
And if you didn't, that's okay too, but you did it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations, John, you and your brother. I've known you guys since you were pooping your pants and very proud of both of you guys that you were staples at every political rally or every, every campaign event your whole life, up to date. So I know you guys will do great. And political science, I'm very happy for you guys. You're going to go on and you're going to change the world and make it better. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, John, oh, Stephanie.
Can I say something? Yeah, I just, I have to say something now because later I might be just bawling and then I won't be able to speak. I just want to say congratulations, John. And I am so, every single time I've had a conversation with you, I've just been so, I've just always felt really welcomed. And that's something that, I don't know, maybe it's like a Lobo thing or something. And I'm so happy to hear that pride in your speech and in your voice. But I also want to say thank you for being so hospitable and for really caring about your peers and your community and your school and for always being open to have those conversations and for being so friendly every single time I've seen you. So I, congratulations again. And I know that you're going to do amazing things and I can only hope that you come back and, you know, make our community stronger because we need more, more people like you and your brother and your family.
Yeah. Lobos have to look out for each other.
Okay, well, thank you, John, so much for coming on and sharing your valedictorian speech with us. We're really, really proud of you. Best of, best of luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, Lori, we will. Do your video, huh?
Yes, we will move on to our videos. I'm going to share my screen. And my sound. And we are going to start with, get my list here. Maria Correio High School, Sophia Ramazadi.
Honorable School Board President Fong and the entire Santa Rosa City School Board. My name is Sophia Ramazadi. It is a pleasure to present my speech to you today as a member of Maria Correio's graduating class of 2020. I was in the sixth grade when I figured it out. We were going to be the class of 2020. I couldn't believe it, the idea that.
Well. It's buffering.
Not sure what to do, I think.
Yeah, did you, are these playing from the internet or downloaded?
They are.
Playing from the internet, from Google?
Yeah, when they were, when they were being downloaded, they were downloading upside down. So they are playing from.
Google?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to just kind of pause it. Okay. I'm going to come back to that one. I don't have them downloaded. Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on to Montgomery High School. And we'll come back to Sophia.
Hi, everyone. Congrats, you made it. Not exactly how I pictured the legendary one and only class of 2020 going out, but here we are. I guess in a way we are legendary and hopefully the only class going out like this. But the fact that we're unprecedented can make us feel like all sense of order is gone and that we have no control. But guess what? There never was any order and we never had any control. It's all simply an illusion. Because in no kind of predictable universe could an angsty, five-foot-tall freshman, that's me by the way, guess that I would play an entire season of basketball and even make a three-pointer. Granted, it was the only shot I made that season. I couldn't predict that I would write my opponent's speech for him in class elections and then proceed to lose to him. How could anyone guess that one day I would be dressed as a nun onstage, singing in Latin, and the next, walking out of class to protest gun violence and climate change? Oh, and face deadly fires. But most importantly, I could never predict that I would find a real chaotic, beautiful family of amazing human beings here at Montgomery. So stop trying to understand why this crazy thing or another happened and just embrace the entropy of the universe. It doesn't matter what it throws at us, fires, floods, singing, nuns, a pandemic. I mean, who knows what will come next? Don't let it make you feel small and helpless because the only thing you can control is how you respond. We need to recognize our power because the world needs us. Otherwise, it will succumb to climate change, hatred, and apathy. But you have the power to act with empathy, determination, and the intention to change the world for the better. If we own up to that and help each other, then no one has anything on us. I cannot wait to see what you'll bring to the world despite the chaos. And I wish you all the best. My legendary, one and only class of 2020.
Okay, we are going to our next. We are now with Piner High School. This is Lindy Quach. Quach? These were playing just fine when I tested them.
It's going through Zoom and so it, yeah, it just doesn't go as fast.
Okay, so maybe what we will do, maybe what we'll do is while the meeting is, is going on, we will try to get these downloaded correctly.
Either download them or upload them to YouTube.
Yeah.
It'll, that's what Rema did and Rema's worked.
Yep. Okay, yeah, and the same, the same is for Santa Rosa High School. It's also the same format. So, okay, I'm going to stop sharing. Okay, and we'll go back to those.
Yeah, we'll come back to them.
So while we're still kind of waiting, and I know we're going to come back, I just want to thank Rema for that speech. I loved how it was about, you know, we have order and control, but it's the illusion of order and control. I think she really covered the whole pandemic situation in her career in high school well. Thank you, Rema. Allegria, are you raising your hand? No? Okay.
Okay, so we will come back to those when we get them downloaded into or uploaded to YouTube. So I think we can go ahead and move to our next item.
And so right now we are having, we are going to be talking about Jasmine Moreno, who is our student board member, who is here, I hope. Where is she?
No, I don't think she was able to come tonight.
Oh, yes, Jasmine is here.
Oh, she says, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to find her and we will bring her in.
Okay. Ms. Jenny Close has joined us.
Sorry to be late.
There she is.
Hi, Jasmine.
Hello.
How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good, good, good.
All right, so may I say a few words, Diane, here?
Yes, 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 please do. I, that was, yes.
Okay. So Jasmine, I really want to, we all appreciate you. And we're very proud of you. And, you know, you've had your share of, of life challenges and you have just navigated with such grace and such power. So just a little bit of background is that she was, she began her junior year or started some of her junior year at Ridgeway. And she actually graduated last November because she was working so hard, so fast. She wanted to make sure she got things done. And she wanted to go back to, you know, regular comprehensive school. And she ended up liking Ridgeway so much because she felt it was a nurturing environment and that it was a better school for her. It was, it worked for her. So she, she did things really quickly and she got to be out of school by November. When I asked her what she wanted to be, and she continued to grow up, is that she wants to be a social worker and a mom. And so those things will happen for her. And she's going to be heading to the junior college in August. And she is especially proud, and we are especially proud, that she was in the first Youth Truth group. And, and she was a spokesperson and she really did tell her truth. And she brought that to us, if you recall. I also know that what she's learned about herself, being on the board and being an expected mom and getting her degree, is that she's actually capable of doing things even though people doubted her, she says. And that what she's learned about schools, what she's learned about schools is that the board really pays attention to the future of the kids, that they get a good education. She sees it. She sees it in how we talk about things. She sees it in the budgeting and how it works. And that's a pretty good thing if you can understand the budget. Her main concerns, though, are the budget and how we pay attention to what kids need. I think she was most proud of, she shared with me, that she spoke up about how some people put students as not being capable of what the things, what they can do. They're struggling, that they don't get the help they need, she feels. But everything is possible with the support of the people in schools and that we all need to work together. So she was really proud of being on Youth Truth and she hopes that we really listen to student voice because that is the truth. She really enjoyed opening the public and the staff's eyes about students. And she also said that students have to be able to voice their concerns and voice their truth and they can't just be passive. And I think that is an extremely important thing as well. And Jasmine, I really appreciate how you brought all of that to us in your comments and in your questions. And you did a good job. Your voice matters and I think you will continue to do that. And we can hardly wait to see what's next for you.
Thank you.
Would you, so would you like to say a few words right now, Jasmine?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Like, I really enjoyed being part of the board, even though like a whole bunch of chaos was going on. But I really love being with all you guys and, you know, hearing all you guys' comments and being able to understand what like school is and what people have to go through and how it works out and everything. I think that was like one of the best things I learned. Because at first I would whine a lot about school because I didn't understand it. And like having the opportunity to be part of the board was just like an eye-opener to me to be able to like understand how everything is managed and how everything comes to be. And I'm just really grateful for like all you guys and letting me be part of this, like the board.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Best wishes to you. Please keep in touch.
I will, you will.
In touch, okay.
Thank you.
Keep making us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Jasmine.
Well, thank you for everything.
Okay, well, you take care. See you soon. And we're getting another Lobo on the board. Our next student board member is Omar Lopez and a student at Elsie Allen High School. So he'll be joining us for next school year. And we can go back to the speeches. They have been downloaded, uploaded YouTube, I'm not sure which. So Lori, let's go ahead and return to our valedictorian speeches.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Beth Burke. And she's going to share her screen and she will be playing the videos.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for bearing with me since we're videos going at the last minute. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Beth.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. Can everyone see our graduate?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm going to try this and, and hope that we've got our audio shared as well.
The audio.
Okay. So I'm sharing my computer sound.
There's a little, when you start your screen.
Should we try her again?
I am recording a video. Can you turn it on here?
Yes, you can hear it now.
You can hear it now? Okay, let's start her again.
It's a little low.
Parents and of course, graduating class of 2020. I am recording a video. Please don't skip through me. I'll be quick. As you might tell, after spending the last two months on Zoom and reaching peak senioritis, our senior year has been filled with chaotic events out of our control. After four years of late-night cramming, unforgettable Friday Night Lights, and being very intimidated by Mr. Alexander, I never thought our final moments as high school students would end like this. And I'm sure many of you feel the same way. Nonetheless, I believe we are one of the most resilient graduating classes in all of history. And let me tell you why. Our class has faced wildfires, power outages, and to end it off with a bang, a global pandemic. And yet, despite all the odds, we are still here with funny-looking hats on our heads, probably still in Iva Jammals, but ready to move on to the next chapter of our lives. That is one thing I have always admired about our class. We were able to prove time and time again that we were capable of embracing the big changes in our lives. I'd like to start off by talking about the 2017 fires. According to the Press Democrat, 1,321 homes in Coffee Park were destroyed due to the Tubbs fire. For many of our classmates, they already had to deal with a tremendous and traumatizing change in their lives as a 15-year-old, barely going into sophomore year. Our community was quick to jump into action. I'll never forget the time our key club built furniture for the families who lost their homes. We built doors and assembled chairs. We cleaned windows and labeled items. We even ended up pretending to deadlifts with a tape measure and we made a competition out of it. It was this year we truly learned how to empathize. It was this year we truly learned the meaning of moving on. I am very grateful to be part of such a strong-willed and humble community. Then came COVID-19. Just as we thought everything was back on track, our world was flipped upside down once again when we were forced to quarantine. We walked out of school mid-March, not knowing it was going to be our last day of high school. Our senior year was cut short and most of the plans we had been waiting for all year were canceled. Regardless, we adapted and still made fond memories, even through Zoom. We showed our pets, changed our virtual background too many times. We became really good at pretending that we were listening. If there was one thing I learned from quarantine, it was that we were still together, even at six feet apart. Even though I am sad about the short time we spent together. Even though I am sad about the short time we spent together as seniors, I realize the months we lost from COVID-19 definitely do not define our senior year, let alone our high school experience. It was how we handled these inevitable hardships that defines both our character and us as a class. Well, four years of spirit weeks, school dances, and embarrassing yearbook pictures have finally come to an end. The world gave us fire and illness, so who knows what else we can handle? I believe we are one of the most resilient graduating classes in all of history. I would like to thank Piter staff, teachers, and parents for their continuous support throughout our four years at this school. I would also like to thank our senior class for giving me the honor to speak as your valedictorian today. We may be six feet apart, but we are definitely not six feet under. Life moves on and so will we. Class of 2020, we made it.
Thank you. That was wonderful. I have to repeat this because it was just so striking. We may be six feet apart, but we're not six feet under. Good job, Lindy.
All right, are we ready for the next one?
Yes.
All right, this one's in vertical format and so thank you for bearing with me. And I'm just going to do this right in front of my Google screen here.
Honorable School Board President Fong and the entire Santa Rosa City School Board. My name is Sophia Ramazati. It is a pleasure to present my speech to you today as a member of Maria Creo's graduating class of 2020. I was in the sixth grade when I figured it out. We were going to be the class of 2020. I couldn't believe it, the idea that my high school class was the class of the decade. It seemed so big, so important, so inspiring. I've dreamed of this day since that time. And there is one thing I have to say to the class of 2020. We made it. We are graduating despite fires, disease, and uncertainty. And that's in addition to all the struggles that come with being a teenager. I know, we are not in an ideal situation right now because our family should be with us. We should be able to hug our friends and truly celebrate our accomplishments. But we are together. We made it. As the class of 2020, we have perfect vision, right? Yet we were blindsided by so much. Not one of us could have predicted the months we have been out of school, robbed of time with our friends and scared out of our minds because of things we cannot control. Yet, how about this? What if the vision abilities of the class of 2020 do not fall under the category of psychic prediction? Instead, our special powers are looking back into the past and seeing forward into the future. Class of 2020, look into the future and envision all the extraordinary things we are going to do. This year may be the end of our high school careers, the end of a decade, but it's the start of a new age. Our experience with natural disasters have taught us the strength of community and the resilience of our hearts. But we must not forget that Maria Creo High School also taught us lifelong skills that go far beyond the quad. We were taught how to handle ourselves with grace, carry ourselves with dignity, and of course, how to avoid getting hit by a golf cart driven by our campus supervisor. Our school is our launching pad and we are the next generation of leaders, dedicated workers, compassionate human beings, doctors, teachers, and adventurers, both in body and in intellect. So I challenge you to see this day, not as evidence that we made it to the end of high school, but as a commitment to embrace hope for the future and create our legacy. Additionally, I invite you to reflect on the past four years and remember, the class of 2020 has achieved academically, artistically, athletically, and innovatively. We are the class who has had two of our runners take first and second place at state. We are the class who has won unanimous superiors for band and has an award-winning Chambers player. We are the class who showed our dominance and unity this year by winning classarama. And, most memorable to me, we are the class who, on senior night, beat an undefeated Cardinal Newman in a volleyball match with the best home crowd cheering us on. When we look back, let us not define our high school experience by this pandemic or the wildfires. Instead, let us reflect on our growth and success as individuals and as a community and be proud. Because no matter what stood in our way, it did not stop us from walking across this stage today and receiving our diploma. Now, this is not how sixth grade me pictured our graduation or how any of us thought the last three months of our senior year would go. But I am proud to be with you today and with utmost honor that I say congratulations, class of 2020. We made it.
That was awesome. Thank you, Sophia. 2020. I like that. 2020.
All right, Sophia. Thanks for bearing with me, everybody.
Oh, thank you, Beth. You're doing great.
And here's Santa Rosa High School. And I apologize, this video was a little bit small, so I tried to get it as clear as I could.
One side, in the middle of every difficulty.
Let her start again.
Albert Einstein, one side, in the middle of every difficulty lies opportunity. I will be the first person to attend and graduate college from my family and I know some of you will be too. Our roads so far have not been easy. Children were born in the blink of 9/11, but it's safe to say we have the opportunity to grow despite the challenges that were thrown our way. These past four years have offered experiences that I never thought I'd have as an incoming freshman. From learning how to give a pick-a-shot, making balloon arcs for the school dance, and to sit on the Senate floor at the State Capitol debating legislature with other students. It was like Legally Blonde, but a lot less pink. Each opportunity I was given, I had to work hard. From dealing with racism, lack of resources, and natural disasters, we as a class have dealt with our own difficulties. We have faced wildfires, power outages, lockdowns, and most recently, pandemic. It is safe to say we have never had a normal year of high school. Seriously, we put the class of Rivendell to shame. However, we have been given the opportunity to learn and grow from every single event. After all, the class of 2020 will have the first virtual graduation. Let's not make this a trend, though, for TikTok's sake. While this isn't what we pictured, after 12 long years, we made it. For every challenge we face this year, there's a good memory to hold on to. Spirit Weeks, Senior Sunrise, Senior Ditch Day, yes, teachers, we know you know, our first prom, our post performances, Mr. Panther, and winning that homecoming game and earning that football title. These are the moments that we should cherish and remember forever. Each one of us has accomplished something that we are proud of throughout our time here, no matter how hard or difficult it may have been. Santa Rosa High School has given us all opportunities, no matter what our background may be, to be successful and feel welcomed. They have given us the opportunity to be a part of amazing programs such as Art Quest, CTEs, ASB, yearbook, and over 30 different clubs to join. Thank you to everyone here, especially the parents and teachers for all the time they spent preparing us for whatever may come next. I want to specifically thank my advisors for helping me accomplish everything I have today and for helping me become a better person and build skills that will forever help me in my future. From learning how to care for livestock, exploring career opportunities, and the ability to stand up and speak in front of you all today. Thank you for always being there and becoming part of my family. Lastly, quiero agradecer a mi mamá Angelina Hernandez y papá Josiel Jiménez por su gran esfuerzo y los sacrificios que han hecho para darme la oportunidad a un mejor futuro. Esto es para ustedes. Honestly, guys, if we can graduate in the midst of what I think Albert Einstein would qualify as a difficulty, we can succeed in whatever we put our mind to. Thank you.
That was Resia Hernandez from Santa Rosa High School, I believe. Thank you so much. I love the comments you have about growth. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Board, for allowing us to have these speeches and have these students come and demonstrate all the talent that you just saw. So yeah, thank you.
Congratulations to the students. It takes a lot to be a graduation speaker and I know they worked really hard on the ideas. And from their comments, you can just see how much their four years have been affected by our environment beyond any class I've seen before. So thank you to the class of 2020. All right, we now are moving on to C8 on the agenda and is a special presentation for the 2019-2020 retirees from the District of Santa Rosa City Schools. Dr. Kitamura.
Thank you. Yes, I'm actually going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Inspector. But I do want to say that I am forever grateful, so appreciative that you, these retirees, have spent their time and their valuable talents in Santa Rosa City Schools, that they have willingly provided support, service, and education to so many students in Santa Rosa City Schools is to be commended. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all so much for the dedicated years of service to the district, to your school sites or your work sites, and to the students and families of Santa Rosa City Schools. Stacy?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong, members of the board and the community. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Everybody should be able to see this. As Dr. Kitamura said, we are honoring and recognizing 50 retirees this evening that represent over 1,000 2.1 years of experience, expertise, dedication, passion, and service to our district, to our students, and our community. Normally, we would have some type of, you know, physical, you know, cookies, you know, recognition, having them at the, at the board. We're not able to do that tonight. And so I wanted to let everybody know that in addition to this presentation, we also had a two-page spread in the Press Democrat this last weekend to honor those that wanted to share their years of experience and their picture. And so you'll see some of those that we're going to shine a light on this evening. When I talk about the 1,000-some years, I want to let you know that with the 50 retirees, if everyone wants to do the math right now, it's an average of about 20 years per person. And in this day and age with how fast-paced life is, as well as just the workplace, that longevity, I think, and we think, says much about our district and our family. And so these teachers and classified members represent that service and that commitment to our students. The greatest number of years of service, so a couple people are above average numerically. We have 43.5 years of service with Ms. Babini at Comstock. And we have Ms. Manzel for the certificated side with 36.7 years of service. The person who is retiring with the briefest amount of time with us is about two years. And we have some about three because this was a family and a career for them that was second, perhaps to something that they had done before. I'll give you a few moments as we finish this up to recognize the classified and certificated staff that have served us.
And as we're finishing being able to recognize the teachers in the pictures here, the, I want to thank the Santa Rosa Press Democrat for working together with us to be able to do the spread, the two-page spread, which will be in next Sunday's newspaper. They, this is a very, very generous donation of time and of resources. And they too recognized all of these wonderful people who have spent so much, so much time and energy in Santa Rosa City Schools. So we give them a big thank you and shout out for working together with us on this two-page wonderful spread. And they're going to provide newspapers that we can give to each of our retirees.
So that's our presentation. And this copy of the PowerPoint will also be available to staff members who would like to share it with their family as well.
President Fong, back to you.
Thank you. So the first thing I want to ask, is this presentation also going to be posted on our website?
Yes, we will ask permission and yes, of the retirees.
I want to go back and look at it again. Some of them went by really super fast. So I want to appreciate them. So to our retirees, on behalf of the board, we thank you. We appreciate you. And I know the kind of thanks from us really doesn't matter. The kind of thanks we're looking for are the thanks from the kids. And we get those kinds of thanks every single day. Having been in your shoes, almost four years ago, it's, it's a job of heart and it's a hard job. And we get paid back, you know, with the kids that we work with. So thank you for, for putting heart and soul into, into children and for establishing those relationships because every single person in our system counts. Because we never know where that child or that teenager is going to find the relationship that is going to save that kid's life. So thank you. All right, is that, that was our presentation? Yes, okay. And it's too bad we can't be in person because, man, those cookies were good. We are moving on now to public comment. Public comment time. Yay. Do what, Lori, do we have public comment? On non-agenda items. This is the time for the public to comment on non-agenda items.
Yes, hello. Again, I will turn this over to our moderator for a public comment.
Hi. So at this time, if you'd like to comment on non-agenda items, please click the raised hand at the bottom of your screen. We will let you know when it's your turn to speak. And please keep your comments to under three minutes. So we'll just wait a moment. Don't see any hands. Last call for public comment on non-agenda items. All right, President Fong, I see no hands.
All right, public comment is closed. We are moving on to reports, the D items, and we are going to start with the CSEA report. And is President Garcia here?
Yes, I just promoted her.
Hello.
Hi, Betty.
Hi, good evening, President Fong. Good evening, Superintendent Kitamura, and School Board members and Student Board member. Oh, I think Jasmine left us earlier, huh?
Oh, yes. Well, she might, yeah.
Yeah. First, we would like to welcome the new classified member. May they find Santa Rosa City Schools a place to work for many years. And I just want to say thank you so much for honoring all of the classified members and you joining this SRTA members as well together and honoring them in the retiree presentation. It was a lot of work, but it was worth it. It was a beautiful presentation, so thank you. And I just want to say we are continually working with get on getting our members to join the committee. We hope to continue working with SRCS and SRTA to do what's best for our students, our employees, and our community. And thank you for your time. and our community. And thank you for your time.
Lori, you're muted.
Thank you, President Garcia. We have a president report from Santa Rosa Teachers Association.
Yes, we do.
Hey, is it my turn? How we doing, everybody? Good evening, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong, members of the board, and members of the community. I'm Will Lyon. I'm the president of Santa Rosa Teachers Association, and I'm representing over 900 educators in our district. I'd like to congratulate the graduates and also the retirees. It's kind of bookends of important rites and passages. Both are important at Santa Rosa High. We have a tradition, when you retire, you get a diploma from Santa Rosa High, that you finish that term of service as well. And I think it's appropriate. We take our jobs as educators every bit as seriously as the students do. I know that the students are excited to move on to the next thing, whatever that is, and the retirees are too. Retire, it both comes with some trepidation. You got to move back into, you got to move into the real world if you're a student. And teachers often, it's a real tough decision to go out. I've never met a teacher that regretted their retirement, even if they fretted on the way out. So I just know every single one of you are going to be happy and healthy. I'll see you in a few months, and you'll be lighter, and you'll be exercising and gardening, and you'll be happy and healthy, and I already miss you. Thanks for all of your work and service. It's been a crazy couple weeks at Santa Rosa City Schools. We joke about 100 days of May every year. The last week of school is a whirlwind, pre-COVID. Now, it's all more difficult. We're closing down this year, and we're doing our work to get ready to reopen our campuses someday next year. So what's happening? We are doing something, I hate to use the word unprecedented, I think it's overused in this time, but it still fits. We have over 180 members in our district, including SRTA, CSEA, site administrators, district administrators, parents, students, 180 people on a Zoom call. That's pretty impressive. And it's a little complicated. There won't be a quiz about this later, but I do want to go ahead and share a little bit of the structure so you can see how complicated it is and what a heavy lift it is. Santa Rosa, as I mentioned a couple weeks ago, because we got a heads-up early that we were going to do this work, we created what we are calling focus groups. So we'll call them SRTA focus groups. We have four of them, elementary, middle school, high school, and special ed. And those are accordion model, going out, coming back in, sharing information, bringing it back in with the district return to school committee. It's got an executive committee, which includes three SRTA exec board members, as well as leaders throughout the district, district office, the SEA, and others. And those are broken into subcommittees, which include elementary instruction, middle school instruction, high school instruction, distance learning for health compromise, health and safety, and childcare. That's broken down into work groups. I'm going to go ahead and stop it there. But we've created, and I say we, because I feel like we've had a hand in co-construing the way this is going. If we're building this airplane in the air, each one of us has access to the power, to the power tools that we're making this happen with. I'm grateful for that. Each one of those committees is, again, that accordion model, breaking it down, coming up with recommendations and suggestions and ideas, altering it back up to executive committee, and ultimately to the bargaining teams. So we can ideally, at the same time, construct MOUs that will give us our minimums and maximums and our lines in the sand and what we're agreeing to do, and then the guidelines that will help us determine how do we handle all of that work. It is an incredibly heavy lift. And I'm so grateful that we've worked so hard to do it together. There are some districts in the county that are going top-down all the way. Just, whoop, we're in charge, we're going to do it, that's it. We're doing the exact opposite of that. I've used the word messy, and I want to make sure that I don't mean that as a pejorative term. I think it's messy but beautiful. Democracy is messy. It takes longer, but the results are better. And that, if you want to go past, which I think we do, having every feel heard, and you want it to be they actually were heard, and those best ideas rose to the top and got to the final project, we have to do an awful lot of listening, which is why there are so many, so many committees, subcommittees, focus groups. But I'm grateful that we're in that mess together. I'm glad that we're doing that work. I'm so proud of our members who are rolling up in sleeves and putting so much energy into that work, even while they're trying to finish up their last week of school. The task in front of us is daunting. We have to be ready, and I think I'll go in order on this, we have to be ready to continue distance learning when we open up in August. We might even, this is a might, we might, if we got the right amount of news and the right amount of time, adjust the calendar a little bit. But it's looking more and more, unfortunately, like we're going to open up distance learning. If we're wrong about that, and the virus disappears, as some people suggest it might, not the scientists, but other people who suggest that, we're ready to go back in the classroom. We know how to do that. We will jump back in, no problem. We will handle that. If we get that, we get a two-day notice, hey, good news, we're going back in. Great, we're on it. However, we have to gear ourselves up for distance learning, similar to what we're doing now, probably with changes, right, because we've had some experience. But we have to be ready for that. At some point, we may be able to do hybrid learning, something that the executive committee is calling brick and click, where we're doing both the certain degrees. And then, at some point, we will be back eyeball to eyeball with all of our students, at least all of them who aren't medically fragile, and teachers and other staff who can come back in. We really need a plan to do all of those things, and the flexibility to jump into it when the time is right. We don't get to decide when the time is right, the virus gets to decide that. We get to decide how to react to that. So it is a heavy lift. In order to do this, we need people, time, and treasure, right? We, it's not enough to have permission from the state or the county to go back in. We have to have the resources to go back in. And those resources, people, time, and treasure, we have trouble hiring people already, right? All over the state, all over the country. We're having trouble hiring teachers. We have our own specific problems with salary and compensation. We thank you in advance if you can get $15 an hour for our CSEA members. The time, if we knew right now a date certain, we will absolutely be ready to get back into a classroom on, pick a date. We, but we are going to have to do it in a hybrid model. We have to plan that out, and time is short. We really need to have this work done by mid-July, so that it can be ratified by all the parties, and we can start using it to make our final decisions and get ready to start the next school year. And the biggest one, the one that I'm worried about all of them, but the treasure. I listened to an interview by Dr. Steve Harrington. He was interviewed by John Jordan. And John Jordan is interested in opening up as soon as we can. And teachers in generally do not want to open up until it is all the way safe. So that's a balance every school and every business and every city is wrestling with now. But in this interview, Dr. Harrington talked about, if we got permission, if we got to phase three, and we got a variance here, and we got a waiver here, and we could come in, we could do, there's different models, 50/50, or AMPM, or ADV, or whatever, different types of versions of hybrid. If we had that permission, he estimated that it would take 20% to 30% more funding to do that right. So if you had the people and the time and 30% more funding, we can do it. We're looking at, I know it's on the report tonight, we're looking at a major haircut in our budget. So those are all challenges. There isn't any one of us in this organization, certainly not me, who can handle that alone. I think we can do it together. I think that if we commit to the work that we're doing, messy but beautiful, we're going to put ourselves in the best position to do the most amount of good for the most amount of kids. I'm grateful that you guys have identified June 3rd as an opportunity to organize and rally around this and educate our community. I'm eager to stand with you, shoulder to shoulder, elbow to elbow at the committee level, and shoulder to shoulder, even if it's Zoom shoulders, to lend our voice to that. I'd like to work with you ahead of time, so we know how much we can help in terms of organizing other CTA locals. I'm particularly interested in inviting other members of the Mighty Nine, which are the nine elementary districts that feed up into Santa Rosa High District, us plus eight others. I'd like to invite them all to come in, because they're facing the exact same challenges. And our city would benefit from a unified response from educators to know that we cannot open up our schools safely without resources, and we cannot open up our economy to really be the healthy economy that we've grown accustomed to over the last decade in California without reopening schools safely. So that's a report on all the work we're doing. Thanks again for the seat at the table. And it's my pleasure, on behalf of SRTA, to stand with you as we do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, President Lyon. I have to echo a lot of what you said. Thank you for painting that picture so clearly. Assistant Superintendent Inspector, do we have an LMC report tonight?
No. President Fong, may I interrupt? Can we do an interpreter switch, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Marcella, are you ready for a switch?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Can you let me know if you can hear me done? Thank you. Okay. Voy a ser yo la interpreta ahora. Muy buenas noches.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
All right, there we go. All right.
Lori, you're muted.
Kitamura, maybe we can take off Labor Management Collaborative Report off the agenda completely, or place it someplace else, unless we're planning to have those.
Well, we can, we can look at that.
We are moving on to item D4, and that is our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. I guess President Lyon and I should have coordinated on what we were going to say, because he said a lot of what I was going to say, which is a good thing. That shows you that we're in alignment. But what I will do is I will show a pictorial, a graph of what he was talking about right now with regard to the committees he was speaking of. And he is exactly correct. We are over 180 staff members, parents, students, both certificated, classified, and admin participating in this feedback gathering, idea gathering adventure, so that we can glean voices, ideas, and thoughts as we prepare a return to school plan. You can see that each of these, why there's so many, why we need so many people, is that each of the elementary, middle school, and high school sections are branched off into working groups, working groups with special education, English learners, technology assessments, mental health supports, and extracurricular activities. We also then have the health and safety group, as well as the remote childcare. And what that means is, what's going to happen with kids when we move to some sort of what Will shared, we're now calling brick and click. Well, when it's the click stage, where are the kids going to go? How are they going to be supervised? Where are the resources going to come from for that supervision? And I think that is all of what we need to discuss on June 3rd. I think that we need community partners, we need space. If we're going to make this work with true instruction in some sort of format, it's not going to be able to be housed just at our school sites with distance learning still going to have to be, no, excuse me, social distancing still going to have to happen. So the structure, as President Lyon said, will be that these working groups will feed the executive committee with priorities and ideas such that we can then begin looking at models and a plan to return to school. Another document that I want to share with you is the, is a timeline. This is, this is, this shows you how serious we are in working together on here. We, it's a backwards mapped timeline. We hope to present to the board on July 8th, a return to school draft. And if you backwards map from there, you can see we have all the different meetings feeding all the voices to the executive committee, including dates that we've set aside for negotiations, because we know that we will have to work with both bargaining units, because this is going to look different. This is going to look different. So that just gives you a frame of what it is we are working towards and a visual of what President Lyon described. In addition, I want to share that today I attended our superintendent's advisory committee, and this is with SCO and Dr. Harrington, and five representative superintendents from across the county. We looked at a first draft of a reoccupation mitigation plan. This will eventually become what we will present to the county to look at, just as the business community presented their business mitigation plan. This is what we will present. We are holding off until next to June 3rd, because first of all, that's when we're meeting again with Dr. Mays and the county health folks. The California Department of Public Health is going to come out with a guidance for schools, we think, on Friday. And so that's going to be very important for us in our work in Santa Rosa City Schools, because we hope that there'll be some, basically some numbers, some guidance. At this point, we can't determine how many students per class, if we were going to come back to a brick model. And until we have that number, it's difficult to plan anything farther out than that. So that's what's coming up in this scenario. It is taking much of my time between our local committees and then the superintendent's advisory with the county. But I think it's, their time very well spent with regard to connecting the voices from the practitioners and the field of our parents to all the way to the county level, where they will be taking a look at our reoccupation mitigation plan. So that's my report for tonight, and I turn it back to President Fong.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura. That is a heavy lift when you don't know kind of what the parameters are. So thank you.
I just had a quick question about, you mentioned the date of when you'll be meeting next with Dr. Mays in the county. What was that date again?
June 3rd.
June 3rd, thank you.
So at this point, I'm going to turn it over for board member reports. So would you like, show me like this if you would like to speak? And that would be Ms. McCormick, followed by Trustee Medina.
Yeah, just a quick report. I attended via Zoom the CIF NCS Board of Managers meeting last Friday, and, you know, every, this affects so many different organizations, and just similar parallel conversations are happening at every level of education, including, you know, CIA including, you know, CIF athletics and the future of that. And so there's a lot of think tank going, a lot of preparation for protocols and baby steps, first trying to get back to practicing and then maybe altered or shortened or delayed seasons of sport and what that's going to look like. But, you know, I just did want to come with the message that I'm glad I get to participate on the NCS Board of Managers because we're just trying to really get to the nuts and bolts of figuring out how to do school in this scenario. But I don't want extracurricular things to go by the wayside when budgets are tight and people are stressed and we're having to prioritize because athletics and other extracurricular activities, like the arts and ag and everything like that, those are things that quickly get on, I don't want to say the word chopping block, but those things come up quickly or put to the side quickly when we're in crisis situation, which we're in. And I just wanted to say and contribute to the narrative of that, how important those extracurricular activities are, especially for our middle school and high school students, and how important healthy living and fitness is during this time of a global pandemic. And I just want you to know that, you know, at that meeting, they're, you know, they are trying to be innovative, creative and beautiful and messy, as President Lyon said, trying to figure out how to move forward. But, so it's interesting and it's scary and there's really smart people going to work on this. And so I just encourage people to continue to get involved and to be innovative and creative and figure out ways to get all the holistic package of education back to our families and our students as we move forward. So that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Medina.
Thank you. I hope y'all could hear me. I'm having some Wi-Fi issues. But, well, first off, I definitely want to thank all the retirees for all their service and congratulate them on getting to retire. I want to congratulate the Class of 2020 and thank all the volunteers for the speeches. They were awesome. Congratulate all the sixth graders and eighth graders being promoted. I want to throw a special shout out to the Getzalis, Child's Language Academy is promoting their very first class this year. So I want to throw a special shout out to them. I wanted to echo a little bit of what Will mentioned about the $15 minimum wage. I, I saw that the city of Santa Rosa is not going to be postponing their $15 minimum wage going into effect in July. I definitely want to applaud them for that. I think that's something that's very important. I know that we're going to have some very major financial issues as are all schools throughout. But I hope that somehow we could find a way and all collaborate to try to ensure that nobody gets paid less than the minimum wage in Santa Rosa. I also just really wanted to thank all staff, certificated, classified, admin for all the work they're putting in, just collaborating together and working on, on figuring out how we're going to reopen. And I hope that our public health officials really recognize how important schools are in terms of our community's reopening and having a successful reopening. And I will talk about that later, but I just really wanted to emphasize that. And again, thank everybody for all your hard work.
Thank you, Director Medina. Other board members? Director Sheffield.
Again, I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates and all the retiring staff. And just my end of the year reminder for families and parents to keep the education going through the summer, to read, to do art, to play and be active and to continue to learn. Just my pitch, my summer message. And have fun, enjoy, try to suffer through the crises, but we can, we can make it fun and educational, too.
Thank you. All right, see no other hands?
Director Close. Director Close.
Director Close. Director De La Cruz after that. Director Manieri after that.
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes.
Thanks. Most of what I have to say tonight is, we'll say for the next part, but I do just, I do want to say, I know we're all saying it, but I think it's supposed to be said. Congratulations to the Class 2020 and to the retirees. This is not the, the ending that anybody envisioned. And I, so I was listening to those speeches, which were phenomenal. I was thinking, man, is it a bummer for resilience to be your claim at the end of high school because you've had to suffer through disaster after disaster? But, but, but you will be resilient. And so that's good. And I was so interested to hear, I don't know if anyone wants to undertake this exercise or maybe if they actually have it done, but I would love to hear or read what the speeches would have been. So like, if anyone wrote their speech in February or even like an outline, I would love to hear the difference. I think that would be fascinating and interesting. And, and I'd love to give anyone that platform, too, because this wasn't what was planned. So that, that's just a big thing. It's, it's big to graduate from high school and, and sorry, it's a little anticlimactic in this, in this way. But congrats. The second thing I want to say, and I just want to say it because I have this little teeny tiny platform in the world, and I'm going to just want to say, his name was George Floyd. And I, and I want to say that because I think it needs to be said by everyone as often as possible. And, and every time this happens, I think we need to say it over and over and over, especially folks who look like me. And I also want to say it, and I'll talk about this on, when, when we talk about reopening schools. But like, like Director McCormick said, you know, when we're in crisis mode, we, we tend to put kind of extracurriculars or things that we think of as extras to the side. And I really want, we as a district have been committed to equity and we've been committed to, to doing ethnic studies and to doing the kind of work that hopefully can change this culture that is not healthy and particularly not healthy for, for people of color. And, and so I just want to make sure that, that in whatever it looks like when we come back, that that stays top of mind and top of the priority list. And, and, and so we can talk about that later and we'll talk about that again. And I will say it again, his name was George Floyd. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Close. Director De La Cruz.
I was having a hard time getting into the, the meeting today because George Floyd is the name that's echoing in my brain right now. And on top of knowing that the numbers of kids in our community who are sick are 90% Latino, those are our kids. Those are the kids who are Santa Rosa City Schools' kids. Our focus on equity is more important than ever. We represent the majority of kids who go to this school, who we know their parents are on the front lines. And it's why it's so critical for us to be on the front lines for them and for our teachers and for all of our staff who know that reality firsthand. So as we sit here and we think about the value of black and brown bodies in our society right now, just want us to sit with some of those numbers again. 90% of the kids in our community who are sick are Latino. That is 61% of our elementary schools are of that community. We have a responsibility to those kids and those families. And I'm really grateful for the ways in which we are taking that seriously. I am really grateful for the, just the unending advocacy and for raising that flag and flying it for those folks who, despite our overwhelming makeup in these numbers, continue to be not seen and not listened to and those names not said. And, and there's joy to be found in all of these moments as well. That's the hardest part about some of this stuff, right? Because kids are graduating. You guys are so incredible. I want to share, I live next door to a graduating senior in the Art Quest program at Santa Rosa High. And my heart was just so full and exploiting, full of joy when I watched her entire Art Quest program with all of their parents drive through her house with signs and flags and, and, and flowers and cards and beeps and bells and whistles. And, you know, that, that balance between like this just deep sadness and so much pain in our community with the beauty of who we are is what we carry for that, for that class of 2020 and for this generation of kids who, who were born when Americans in our community who were heat jobs, flew American flags in the back of their car windows and who graduate at the time that another African-American man is murdered in the streets during a global pandemic that is killing black and brown people more than anybody else. So I can't imagine a heavier burden to carry to also remember that there is joy and pride in who we are. And I'm really grateful and I just want to do a special shout out to Rocío Hernández y sus padres. Que hicieron mucho para asegurarse que su hija se graduara como... Ni sé cómo decirlo en español, pero wow. That, that combination of strength and resilience and pride is what, is what's going to make us survive and thrive and, and hold each other really tight and really close despite this distance. Adelante, felicidades, clase de 2020.
Thank you, Director De La Cruz.
And Rocío is what Director McCormick was talking about, a product of an after-school program or extracurricular program in ag that I, I've watched that child from the freshman to the senior year go on to national competitions and speak the way she spoke. And she is an absolute why we can't let go of the things that help kids through these kinds of times.
Director Manieri.
Well, first, I also want to congratulate the Class of 2020 and all your achievements. And I hope that despite all that we're experiencing as a community and as a world that, as Director De La Cruz said, to find the joy and to celebrate and to, and to really take, take the moment in and to like own it. Because that's, that's, oh my God. Every time I go after you, Director De La Cruz, this happens. And, and to really own that moment because that's something that no one can take away. And I was really reluctant to, to speak because I feel that same heaviness and that same weight that Director De La Cruz and Director Close were also sharing and talking about. And I had the same thought. You know, how do, how, how do we have these conversations, honestly? And, and talk about the trauma that our brown and black kids are experiencing? I mean, not only socially, like as a community and with all of the things that we've just been seeing for, forever, but now with this pandemic. And I came across like a couple of research papers. I like to read research papers on my own time. And there's a lot of research that suggests that in, in several months, in, in September or around that time, we're going to see, we're going to see suicide rates go up. And that makes me really concerned and really sad. And I think that we need to be prepared and we need to be ready. And I completely echo what Director McCormick said about extracurriculars and how we can't put that aside. We, we have to be, we, in the district, I'm not just talking about us as a board, but as a district, the adults in the district, we need to be those people because it, it takes one person to save a life. And, and I completely agree that we can't lose sight of the things that keep kids in school, like ethnic studies and, and like sports and other extracurriculars. I know that that's what kept me in school. So I, I mean, I just, I guess I just want to make like a, a public commitment to ensuring that, that we don't lose sight of that. And, and with all that's going on, I think that, like, and I don't know if I want to say this, but it's coming from the heart. Like, if you're not as outraged and as sad and frustrated as a lot of us are with, with the state of affairs of our community, please evaluate your privilege and, and do something. Because we have so many kids that are hurting, yet they're so resilient and brilliant and, and they deserve to be celebrated. So do something, do something. I think I said a lot more than what I wanted to, but it's, it's all coming from the heart. And I just want to say again, congratulations to the Class of 2020. I felt every word that was said about resiliency and strength and overcoming barriers. And, and I felt it, I really felt it. And I can see it in the way that our students carry themselves and in the way they, they talk about their futures and the way they have hope for our world. And I'm just, I'm also really excited to see what they do. And I'm really excited to see some of them maybe come back to our community and make change here. So again, congratulations. And there's a lot of work to do. And, and we're going to do it together and we're going to be here for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Manieri. All right, I'm going to make a few remarks right now. And actually, I wrote this, but then I scrapped it and I wrote it again. So let's just try it because I don't want to forget anything. Thank you for all those remarks, everybody. And I'm going to shift us a little bit. Did you guys know that the Chinese character for crisis? I don't know how to say it, but it's made up of two characters. So crisis in Chinese character is made up of two characters. And the two characters are danger and opportunity. And I think I heard it in all the seniors' speeches tonight about, you know, what they've been through and the opportunities and how they're stepping through that and the resilience and the growth that they talked about. And they were very inspiring. So this is our last week of school. And, and what I want to talk about is a tribute. It's a tribute to everyone for a job well done and for everyone's emergency response. Students and families, teachers, school staff in all roles, counselors, instructional aides, campus supervisors, site and district office staff and directors of programs and program managers and family engagement folks, nurses, psychologists, student advisors, maintenance and operations and our custodians, child nutrition, human resources, tech support, tech support and innovation, the budgeting, the transportation, student and family services, site administrators, district administrators and directors. Did I say teachers? I should say teachers 10 times. And to Diane. You have all done this emergency response work with intelligent action and compassion. And I'm so proud of everyone. And my heart is full because of Santa Rosa City Schools. Santa Rosa City Schools, every single person that makes up Santa Rosa City Schools, you are living up to our vision, that is our vision, the board's vision, that is worth repeating now, that our vision is to send students into the world empowered to find purpose, to think critically, to embrace diversity, work together, adapt to our changing planet and live healthy and fulfilling lives. And these are the assets of successful human beings. And we are still working And we are still working on this every day, no matter where we're located and what life is throwing at us. And again, we heard it from our, our own kids. So one of the most important things now is to also celebrate our 1,800 seniors who have been in school since age five. And this is a, this is a celebration of all their teachers through their entire lives and their families and their village. This is their rite of passage. It's looking quite different this year, but and many are inventing new ways to commemorate. So let's remind everybody that Friday night, in just a couple, three days, everyone should go out to their outside, outside their place of living. And the kids have cowbells. I think they got cowbells because the board and Diane, we got them cowbells. And that's a silly token, but it's a noise making token and it's something. So anybody have their cowbell with them? Okay, so why don't you guys unmute yourselves? And this is, this is the cowbell. And just on Friday night at seven o'clock, head out to your porch, make a lot of noise, bang pots and pans. So we're going to do that in a little celebration because we are launching you and we're very proud of you. Let's see. Yes, we are releasing you into the world. Unfortunately, a world of recession, but I hear that the JC is free and that everything is online, so you can also stay at home and work and help your parents. So as Diane, as Superintendent Cutimora and President Lyon and President Garcia pointed out, we are now moving into the restart and recovery phase. And we must be reactive and proactive at the same time. Hats off to the staff who are working now to create the best version of school come fall, every single system, all the committees. I think at one point I heard Diane was telling me it was 23 committees. So warning to everybody, as, as all of you have already heard, school is going to be different. We're not going to be offering all-day school, eight o'clock to three o'clock. Everything's different. I love brick and click, some combination. I know we have no answers. I know there are no traveled roads. And I've said before, we are making the road by walking. And I want to return to where we began the school year. Gosh, Dr. Cutimora, was it this year or the last year? And that it was this Mayan, a Mayan phrase, do no harm and we are together and it's in lakesh, in lakesh. Sing it right?
In lakesh.
In lakesh. And means that you are my other me, I believe. And that I am so proud and so grateful that President Lyon pointed out and President Garcia pointed out and Diane pointed out that we are working together, that we are in it together, because whatever happens to teachers happens to us, whatever happens to kids happens to everything. We're in this together. We are one. And I know we hold this to be true. The board is grateful to all of our staff. We have a strong organization and we count on everyone's heart and intelligence and ability to bring their very best on behalf of all those who are entrusted to us. We're not done. We have a lot of work to do. That July me that is going to come really quickly. I'm heartened and I'm so proud of this district by what I see because we are responding well to our students, our families and what our staff is telling us. And I want to encourage everybody, and I think Dr. Cutimora will be talking about this, we have this agenda item coming up, but it really is about the town hall and feedback. And we need to know and we need to communicate with our community. So June 3rd at 6:00 PM, you'll hear more about that in our next little thing. All right, thank you. Someone's raising their hand? No, okay. The only CSB report is, I'm a delicate right now, is simply that they're working on reopening school, but honestly, our district is doing as much, if not more, than anybody else. So we're on track and we really are looking at budget. Everyone's pressuring the state and the feds about the budget. We're going to hear more about that tonight as well. All right, we're moving on to our discussion item. Discussion, Director Close, is that you waving your hand?
I have a CSB report as well, really quick. Because I have a legislative committee, they would have had like some emergency legislative committee meetings. And, and then we have one next Friday on the 5th. And they really want to hear us bring back specific information from our district. And so President Fong and also Superintendent Kimura, like, you know, I'll get some notes from the town hall and all that, but then also if you have specific things that you want me to bring back to the CSB legislative committee.
And when is that?
Please, Friday the 5th.
Okay, good timing. All right. We are on item E1. It is discussion item. Special meeting to prepare resolution and call to action as it relates to safely returning to school and the associated issues. Dr. Cutimora.
So I prepared this at the request of President Fong, Director Close and Director, Vice President Sheffield. I, excuse me, I'm going to pull it up here. I think that we are in this mode, in this phase, based on everything we've experienced the last three and a half years that our graduates talked about. That I have come to the conclusion as your superintendent for those three and a half, four years, four years, that in order for us to move the district forward and do the things that we need to do, that many times we have to do it on our own. And we can't do it on our own because we need money. That's another story that you're going to work on, that we're going to work on. But we're not, and I told, I said this, I've said this to the committees, I've said this to the, our union partners, that we can't sit back. We absolutely cannot sit back. If we want to provide our students and our staff with the safe and productive educational setting, we're going to need to create it. And in doing so, we have brought together, as I said, this strong group of people with lots of voices to come together to provide that plan. Now what we need is we need support from all the community. And I think that's what the board is poised and set to do through this potential call to action, a definite June 3rd special meeting. My dog is absolutely in favor of this and is barking behind me in support of this activist action for us to move forward. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the board to have a discussion. Because I think when we talk about the special meeting, and there's a lot of information in the actual board cover about what direction you want to go for that meeting, I think for us it'd be beneficial to have some, some focus areas that we want to speak to or provide the community to be able to speak to. And then really to build that call of action and you may want to do a resolution. I don't know if that is something that the board would like to do. I think it'd be powerful. I think it'd be powerful to send it to all in the land who, you know, think they have the answers for us when really the answers are inside of us. So with that, I turn it back over to you, President Fong.
So I want to, I want to thank you, Dr. Cutimora, because what I've been grappling with is a lack of integrated leadership, that we're all running, not we, every community sector is running in all different directions to take care of what's important for them, what's right in front of them. So what's right in front of them is what they're taking care of. We have children in front of us and we, our system is integrated with every other system, every other system in our community. Schools do not exist in isolation, yet they're telling us, well, you could open, well, kind of like business, you know, you open like, like social distancing and that, we all know that doesn't work. It doesn't work for schools very well at all. And so I have asked, I've chatted with a couple of board members per the Brown Act. And I've chatted with other supervisors in the county, county superintendent, legislative people, other board members across the county about what, what can we do to call ourselves to action? Because this is not just a, this is a shift, but it's also a chance for us to transform things, that we need different ways to do things. There's no more ag, the way we used to do it. Agriculture model of schooling. And I've been saying this forever, right? No more industrial model of schooling. Why are, we cannot be hampered by old structures. It is time for us, like I said, in terms of crisis, it's opportunity and danger that we really focus on the opportunity. And I really want to thank Dr. Cutimora because she is proact, she is reacting proactively. And that's really important because we have to do it ourselves. We are the ones we've been waiting for, that kind of cliche talk, but this is it. So I want to hear from, from all of you today, board members today. And we'll take some, let's see, public comment as well. What we want to say when we have this town hall meeting and we're getting a lot of input, what is it that we're looking for? How do we, how do we set chart, chart ourselves as a district and set policy in our role? You know, our role is not to figure out what the teachers figured out and what, what Dr. Cutimora and her committees figured out. Our role is charting policy direction for our school district. We do not say that we should have this kind of learning or that kind of learning or this kind of time schedule or that kind of time schedule. We are, we are. What does education look like in our community? And so this is very wide open, very wide open. And I'm counting on your best thinking. So right now I'm opening it to questions, I think, yeah, questions? No, I'm just going to open a discussion. And then we're going to take public, public comments.
Yeah, I just want to add, first of all, I agree that Diane, I think you put it, you and your dog, I'm, I'm agree 100% that, you know, we have to sometimes take the lead on things. And there are a lot of discussions that are going on locally around rebooting, jump starting the economy, the business community. There's a lot going on at the state level and action that's going on in Sacramento and even at the federal level. And, and schools and districts are part of these discussions in some instances, but a lot of times we are not part of the discussion. And I think that here through crises, it's an opportunity for us to invite ourselves to the table, to be a part of it. And I've been saying that in the conversations that I've been having, I've been saying, well, what about, what about this? What about schools? What about the reality of working parents? What about the realities of, you know, having a, a community that has so many different layers, a stratified of our workforce? We can't do it. We can't do it the way that I'm hearing from folks in the business community, how things should be done. I'm not hearing it from Sacramento. I'm not hearing it in the daily updates or now, you know, semi-weekly updates from the governor's office. I'm not hearing enough on the realities of, of childcare, working parents. How do, the view, the vision of what education's going to look like? It's, it's maddening that all of these discussions are taking place and yet one key component is being left out. So again, this is that opportunity. I think Jen brought it up at our last meeting about the power that we have as far as, maybe legislatively speaking, as far as pushing for funding for education, pushing for adequate funding, pushing for a new vision of what education might look like. So here is an opportunity. I know we're going to have a bigger discussion on this, but, but I just wanted to add that. That's it.
Director Close, do you want to chime in on this as we get started?
Or are we just getting started? Or is this, are these preparatory remarks? I'm ready to dive in whenever you are.
Dive in.
Okay.
This is the plan. I think I'm going to give each one of us a chance to kind of dive in at like a little bit. And then we're going to take, or as much, and then we're going to take some public comment and then we're going to go back to it, okay?
Are you saying I should set aside my 30-minute speech that I have prepared?
Yes.
That's, that's a joke. Okay, my preparatory comment will be, is this, you know, exactly, Ed, there are a whole lot of conversations happening, but they're not really acknowledging the importance of, or the integration of schools in these conversations. And, and there's, there's just sort of a nod to them, we've got to, we'll got to get schools open so people can go back to work. Or there's just an assumption, like schools are going to start in August or September or whenever, and so people can go back to work. And we're really focusing on the economy. And listen, we need to focus on the economy. And the same folks who are hurt by our health crisis are the people who are also disproportionately hurt by our economic crisis and by being home and being in overcrowded places. And then by, by being poor and not having this, the same, the same resources that they do nervally. And so our, and by not having school, by the, they're disproportionately hurt by learning loss. There's, the most vulnerable among us are hurt by, by either school or both school closing and the economy closing. But we are not having an intellectually honest conversation about this. Like we, this, well, I think our town hall should be called Street Talk with Santa Rosa City Schools, because someone has got to get real and say, like, I love that you, you linked to the EDB guidelines. If you look at that, or if you look at any of the guidelines for businesses, that, some of them that say schools should be open, there's no way on God's green earth that school would be open in any version, that, anything that looks close to like what we do right now, or any of the like alternative schedules that have been proposed, they would not meet those guidelines. They just wouldn't. And so we need to get real and say, no, you know, we can't safely open with less money. We can't safely open with the same money. We can't say safely open with the same people. And we definitely can't safely open for the same amount of time. We just can't. We cannot do it. And if we have to refuse, we have to refuse. At the same time, I think to the extent we can safely, we want to get people, people back to work to the extent we can safely. And we want to get kids in school. And so right now, like what we, I want us to think outside the box, blue sky thinking, what are all the ways we can do this? And demand of everyone we can make demands to, that everyone goes all in on this, that that as people are just as focused as getting schools open to the extent they can be safely as they are in the economy, because it's, it's necessary. We're going to have to thread the needle. So that's my, those are my preparatory comments. I look forward to that discussion.
Thank you. And this is going to be a heavy discussion. So the reason why I want us to give more time for us to say a little bit more is that when public comments, they're probably not knowing what, what this is about. It's very vague, but all right. Other directors want to chime in now? Okay, say, okay, so I think we're going to open it to public comment. Moderator, it's time for public comment.
Okay, so please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this agenda item E1. Click raise hand at the bottom of your screen. And we will let you know when it's your turn to speak. And President Fong, I don't see any hands at this time.
Thank you. So let's just kind of keep framing this. The intention is that we, as a Board of Education, create a call to action to our leaders, the leaders outside of us in terms of how we can possibly do school, continue to educate kids and how we do that in partnership and how things might have to shift and what has to shift, because everybody has a piece of this. And like Director Close says, we just can't be the afterthought, oh, the kids are going to go back to school, so now the parents can go back to work. Way more complicated than that. And so what do we want to say? Do we want a resolution? Do we want to call it action? Who do we want to address this to? My thoughts were that we write a resolution to our county, to our county supervisors. But now I think that's not large enough because their, their, their hands are tied as well. They've been trying very hard as well. And so do we send it to our state legislative? do we send it to our state legislators? And so it's, it's kind of what we're, what we're inventing right now. We are making the road. What do we want to say to our larger community about what it takes for school, and what kind of shifts we need to do, what kind of transformation we need to do, and how do we do this on our own? Because we cannot do it on our own.
I, I think that Director Close talked about straight talk and get real. And so I would say to all of you right now, get real, and give it to a straight. What are we asking for? And if you want even to go to stronger language, what are we demanding? As a, as a, as a Santa Rosa City School District, and all of you on behalf of the communities you represent, what are we demanding from all who will listen about the start of school, the so-called start of school?
Well, I think funding is, funding. I mean, we've been demanding funding forever, it seems like. And it's a constant place where the rubber meets the road, and it's usually the, the source of conflicts whenever we're trying to move forward in a district. And then now we're in crisis, and they're cutting our funding is absolute insanity. So funding, like a lot of funding, like revolutionary public education funding. We need that.
So I think that we should ask for what the feds are supposed to give to the state. And so Rick, you can help with that language and how much that is. And then I think we need to ask for that 30%, more, or whatever that percent more is, in order for us to even approach any sort of different kind of school starts, school happen, if the number's 30% or whatever that number is.
I think we need money, space, and people. We need money. We need money, pay for extra people. We need extra people, some of whom are, there's not enough teachers, not enough instructors, staff, so we're going to need extra folks. We're going to need parks people, we're going to need more classified people, we're going to need lots of people to be helping teachers do their job. And we need space, outdoor space, big open spaces. President Fong and I talked to, talked to one of the supervisors today about saying, let's look at all our county assets, the fairgrounds, the parks, everything that's open and big, right? That lets people spread out, that spreads the air out. We need money, space, and we need people, which of course we can talk more money. And we need people to start putting their, you know, walk the talk of we love teachers. Because let's be real honest about the position that we're putting teachers in. Our teachers get sick all year, every year, because of germy kids. We love kids. They are young people who have young people's minds and young people's practices. And let's be real about that, okay? And let's have reasonable expectations and understand that this time, we are saying to teachers, we are putting you in harm's way. We're putting you in harm's way of a more contagious disease and a more dangerous disease. And it's not an unknown. It's not a risk. It's, it's, it is there. It's a known risk, right? And so let's be really honest. Let's walk the talk of how we care about teachers. And let's start there, and start with our care for kids, and say, how, look at those business guidelines, and say, what do we, how much space, money, and people, and how many people do we need to actually do whatever they're requiring of movie theaters, for example, to open?
If I may, I think there's a lot of different components that we need to look at. You know, Jill addressed funding. I think I would like to kind of have an idea of what, if anything, might come out of the HEROES Act that would maybe, you know, end up coming to us, if, if anything. If not, developing some sort of demand from the federal government, because, you know, our state obviously doesn't have the money. So where are we going to get the money? So we need to have that be part of the demand, or as part of any resolution, of action towards some sort of ask for the federal government, and thus then the state, since it would come through them. But I think on a, on a more local level, in terms of, of what we might be experiencing, you know, I'm looking at, at the trajectory of cases and hospitalizations and everything that's going on right now. You know, it's increasing. This is the first wave. We're, we're talking about a second wave. I think we need some sort of local supportive services and policies, both in terms of what local employers do and allow for, for our parents, in terms of being able to take off work if their child gets sick, and having supportive services provided by the county to help those families in those situations. And simultaneously, we need some clear guidance from our public health officer in terms of what are the procedures that we're going to need to take into account, or, or perform locally in terms of ensuring that our students are safe, but also to ensure that there's constant testing or identifying of potential cases if we do have students physically back on the campuses. But also funding for those services. We, that goes back to the funding. But I think locally, there needs to be those policies that tell us how it's all done. But the most critical thing, I think, is the support services provided to the family of our students. Because if, if, if things aren't good at home, our students are going to be suffering, and they're going to be suffering with their education, right? And, and the biggest thing that I see coming as an issue with a lot of our families is the issue around rents, with people that haven't been able to pay the rents for a while. You know, it may be delayed, or the rents may have been postponed. But, but the issue of evictions is something that I see that's going to be happening, and people are going to be struggling with. And that's going to impact the families of our, of our students. And thus, it's going to impact the, the educational experience that they're going through because of an increased hardship, especially if, you know, if they're dealing with the loss of, of households or places to study. So I think supported services, asking for those, and guidance and policies to help our families is something that we need to include in any resolution.
Thank you. Director Medina, Director Taylor-Cruz.
I just want to echo what Director Medina said about recognizing our responsibility to our families, to make sure that our kids are, are safe and healthy. We did an enormous service to people by feeding kids during this time. That, that need is not going to end anytime soon. It's going to continue. Our role as a place where kids are safe, and where they receive, and their families receive additional support, is going to be more critical now than ever, moving forward into this future. And so I think, just as, as Director Medina said, it's going to require each one of us to become an advocate for policies that are around wrapping our students with every kind of resource that they need, and that includes their families. So that's paid sick leave, that's, you know, rent stabilization, that's increased funding to legal aid, that's, I mean, it's, it's, you know, recognizing the ways in which schools have become another form of community institution, and how important it is going to be for us to really just draw that safety net tighter than ever. Because we're going to be catching so many more kids, and so many more families, as we, as we take those kids, and as we take care of those kids as we do. You know, when it comes to how we're going to protect teachers and staff, we need to make sure that we have sufficient protective equipment, personal protective equipment for every single person. We need to be very clear about what kind of PPE that is, and that everybody gets the same kind of PPE regardless of whether or not you're a principal, or you're somebody who is making sure that the fields are clean and safe. What is happening in different industries with different treatment of folks, depending on what jobs they have, and, you know, that a janitor in a hospital doesn't get the same kind of masks as a surgeon, that's not okay. And that's not a, that's not a protective way to move through recognizing us as an entire institution full of people who share a responsibility to keep that institution and the kids who exist in it, and the families who, who rely on it, healthy and safe. And so it, you know, I, I think we're going to, it's not necessarily, I, I'm so saddened by the way so many, so many people in our community have had to take on the responsibility of figuring out what their own plans are, instead of being told by, you know, folks right now during this time. And I, I recognize that, you know, every time the county health officer comes out with something, the governor does something different, and we're all dizzy. But, you know, this is a time when local governments, like, like our city schools, play such a critical role in providing that safety and that clarity about this is what you can expect, and it's not going to change because, you know, the virus isn't changing. We, we have no vaccine. What we have now are more beds in hospitals. That, 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 that's not, that does not make me feel safe as a school board member to send, you know, my own kids, your kids, Ed, you know, back to our schools with Jen, your sister, who's a teacher, and all the teachers that we care about, and all, I mean, I, I just, that the, that the economy is opening up is not, is not a beacon of things changing. It's, it's, it's just, it's really kind of making me a little unhinged, frankly. So I think we all need to, to become advocates, even, even broader advocates than just for educational issues in our community at this time, and really sharpen our equity focus and recognize that we need to design towards the folks who are most vulnerable during this crisis, and every single time we make a policy. We are not designing to the people who read English. We are not designing to the people who are online. We are designing at every single turn that we make any policy in this institution. We are designing to the people who don't speak English, to the people who don't have Wi-Fi at home, the people who don't read emails. That's how we need to be designing our response, is designing to those margins, because we represent the, I mean, that's the beauty of this place, and that's the beauty of this group of leaders, is that we recognize our responsibility to design to our, our kids and who we are. And because those margins are now the majority, that's what we do. That's who we are. And I can't imagine a more amazing time to showcase what it means to design to the margins, to do equity design. And, and I am so fired up, and I am so thrilled to be able to, like Jen said, have this tiny little platform to say, here you guys, this is how we do. This is how we do in this moment, for those folks who most need us to figure that out. And we are going to figure it out, because that's who we are, and that's who we represent, and that's who we take care of, are those people who are, who are, who are suffering the most. And, you know, just like Stephanie said, you got to open your eyes, the pain in our community, and the sickness, and the frustration, and the fear. And on top of that, being blamed for our sickness, being blamed for our illness, that it's a lack of education, or it's a lack of resource, or it's because we don't have, nobody uses Clorox or wear masks. Like, we all know that's not true. We all know how awesome Fabuloso smells in the morning. Like, but this is not about living in dirty homes, you know? Like, this is about making sure that when the parents of those kids go to work, that their employers are taking care of them. And that they're protecting their safety when they walk out that door, so that our kids are safe when their parents come home to hug them at night. Because they're just making a horrible choice between putting food on the table and, and not, or putting food on the table, or getting sick and bringing it home to their families. So just, more than ever, we just need to really be, be community advocates for the kids who need us to see their lives, in all their entirety of their lives and who they are. That's, that's, that's what we do. That's, that's who we are.
I am taking notes. Thank you for that. We need to change interpreters right now. So we're going to take a second to do that.
Thank you, President Fong. Mr. Bigelow, are you ready to switch? Thank you. We're switched.
Thank you, Laura. Other board members? Are you weighing in? Director Manieri?
Yeah. The first thing that comes to my mind with this conversation is, is the data that we've gotten through the county about who is disproportionately affected. And we know that it's the Latino community. We know that it's low-wage workers. And none of it is a surprise, right? We know that if these folks are the ones experiencing challenges and barriers before a crisis, that it's only obvious that they are also the ones experiencing real, really, really difficult situations during a crisis. And so, and then the next step for me is thinking, well, what do we do with this data? What, what, not only like, what does this tell us, but what are we going to, what are we going to do with it? How is this going to inform our, our, our design and our decision-making? And, and I think that one meeting to have this conversation is not enough. And I'm not just talking about this meeting, but, you know, on June 3, I'm hoping that we can invite others, whoever we have relationships or connections with in, in our county, in our city, to, to listen to, to what our, our community has to say. Storytelling and narrative is incredibly powerful. And I mean, I sit on a ton of meetings, and, and the community's not represented. As much as, you know, any of us want to sit in on these meetings and talk about what, what we're seeing with our clients, you know, in our day jobs, it, it's not representative of the community. And so I know Dr. Harrington brought the idea of an education task force up to the county. And I think that that's something that we really need to demand, because one meeting to have this conversation and to really look at design, and, I mean, it's, it's just not enough. And if we're going to even start talking about the long term, and, and what education's going to look like past this pandemic, and past this point in time, then, then we need to have a dedicated group of people. And I know that the county has task forces for, for, you know, things that really interest them, like business and, and economy and other things that are, that are very important. But like all of you have said, we can't, education is such an integrated part of every single system, and we can't not be having these conversations, and it can't not be a priority. So I think that we also need to demand a task force, and a committed group of folks from across the county to really look at this issue and to talk about that data. I don't know if people are talking about this. I mean, I know that we're having some conversation about it, but, but I don't know if there are any conversations being had about the data and about our kids at a county level, and what this means for education. And I think that that needs to happen. So I think that that's something that, if we're going to move forward with a resolution or some sort of call to action, that that should be included in it as well.
Anyone else? Director Medina?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up another thing that I thought of as, as I sat here. And one of, one of the things that, you know, that I'm not in favor of generally is community service officers. But I think that a, a model that, that I would like is something about social workers assigned to the schools.
Director Medina.
The idea.
Stop, stop, stop. What did you say? You're not in favor of what?
Oh, generally, community service officers, just, just in general on campus. I don't like cops on campus. But that's neither here nor there right now. But I think something similar of an outside agency serving on, on our schools would be the idea of social workers assigned to our schools. And specifically, what I'm thinking of is the Pollen Building, Sonoma County Human Services Department. One of the things that they have there is, there's a form. It's called, "We are here to help," the "We are here to help" form. And I think if, if the county could invest in bilingual social workers that they could assign to our schools, and then we could, you know, we're going to, we're going to have our families having needs, and we're going to face issues throughout this. But what, basically what those social workers do, is when those families have needs, they connect them with whatever it be, like, I need help paying my electricity. I need to figure out how to pay my rent this month. I need some sort of medication. I just lost my job. What do I do? All those types of things. The form, the person fills it out. This is my need. A social worker figures out where they need to go, tries to connect them with those services. I think that's one thing that I would love to see the county invest, by developing, by, by investing in social workers that are then serving as liaisons to each of our schools, so that our family engagement facilitators, or someone on staff can kind of guide families towards that, as, as the needs arise. Because oftentimes, people don't know where to go, and, and, and schools are safe spaces, and they oftentimes have questions from our staff. And, and I think having that investment would help develop a good partnership. And I think if we're going to ask of our local, you know, elected officials in our local agencies, I think that's something great to ask for, that I think now, more than ever, will be needed. ever will be needed. Add it to the list.
I added it to the list.
I do want to say something with regard to the educational task force. That was one of my biggest pushes as well, Director Moneary. And I think one of the problems that is that we have to have straight talk about is it's hard to have a task force with 40 school districts in the county because everybody points about they're not being represented on a task force. And I have experienced in my time here that everybody looks to Santa Rosa about what to do and then everybody is not happy with Santa Rosa because we set the way of what to do. And so Santa Rosa City Schools. So I think there's a couple of things we have to do in this is that we've got to address the fact of the amount of resources that 40 school district, it takes to run 40 school districts. And how do we, how do we have an educational task force that is, how do I say this? Represents the needs, but also represents what everybody just talked about. Like, for example, I would definitely come to that task force with an equity lens and an advocacy for the 95% of our children, Latino children, who are not well. And there would be differences of opinion because of the different representations we have across the county. So I'm just talking straight talk and boy, I'm going to hear about this, but it's a fact. It's a fact we have to face. So if it's through an education task force that is also doing the real work and facing the equitable, the equity disparities, the disparities in what's happening, then I think we should do that. And I think that might need to be a parameter. If it's a task force, as all task force have been, I don't want that. I don't, I think we have to have something different than that. Dr. Harrington said today that the county office of education is its own legal authority and that in fact, we don't have to have approval by the county. So I want to explore that. I want to explore that. What does that mean? If we don't need to answer to or, you know, a county entity and we can do it through the county office of education, then we should utilize that power. So that's, I can turn it back to you.
If I can add to that.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, also as it relates to money, I mean, you know, just looking here at Santa Rosa, we've got to look at efficiency, how effective we are spending our money. We're what? Just in Santa Rosa, we got what, like nine school districts? We got nine superintendents, 47 board members, 60 schools. I think 20 of those are charter schools. I mean, how many contracts are negotiated? All the money and resources spent on that, you know, all the administrative costs? That's just in Santa Rosa. I mean, if we're talking about money and how efficiently we're spending money in the city on education, I don't think we're being effective having so many school districts. So that's a serious issue that needs to be looked at. And I think it takes a lot of like, you know, ride from all the different school districts into like deciding to consolidate. And so that's part of a serious conversation that needs to have and a serious task force that needs to be developed. So thank you for bringing that up.
Director Moneary, did you want to something about the?
Yeah, I don't know if Director Close was first, though.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Can't keep track of who's raising their hand. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Oh, Director Close, do you want to go first? I saw you, I want to honor your hand raise. Okay. No, I completely hear you Superintendent Dr. Kitamura. And so then my response to that, or at least my initial thoughts are, so maybe task force isn't the right word. I completely agree that it needs to be something different. I hear what you're saying about, I completely hear what you're saying about intentions and purpose and the way that we lead with equity. And so then I'm thinking, well, then what about a group committed to talking about equity and making education more equitable and having a serious conversation about making education equitable across this county? And I don't know what that would be called, but to Director Medina's point about consolidation, like that would be a conversation that you would have in a group like that. So I don't have the terminology to try to put a name to that or, you know, the language to put a name to that, but I still think that they are conversations that need to be had at a higher level. And so however we do that, it just needs to happen. And there's a window of opportunity here and I would hate to not see us take it.
Yeah, I too don't know what kind of words those are. I just, and I think that you and I are on the same track. We want the same thing. We just got to figure out what entity, what group that is that will truly talk about these issues and put actions to them, straight up.
Director Close and then Director Sheffield.
Thanks. I think yes to all of that. And we do need some kind of task force or group. It does need to be driven by equity, this discussion. This is a perfect time to recognize the ridiculousness of so many school districts and to look at changing that, you know, if we're going to do some kind of major restructuring around school that includes other spaces, it makes sense to do that by geography, not by district. Also, you know, I tend, this whole district, district competition thing, I just, it always rubs me the wrong way, like you either care about kids or you don't. Doesn't matter what district they're in. I mean, come on. But my concern is this, we don't have a lot of time here. And anytime you say task force or committee, I see doodles and meetings, you know, pushed out a week and two weeks and depending on one person and someone's mad because they didn't get invited and blah, 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 and nothing happens. And so, you know, I, you know, first of all, I think that Dr. Kitamura, you've taken a strong leadership role here and as the superintendent of the large district in the county, you absolutely should. And when there's not a strong, strong leadership voice, you step into that vacuum and I'll have your back every day. But, you know, I really, and yes, this can't all be done on the 3rd as Director Moneary said. And so I do think, you know, if we need to set up some successive meetings, but on the quick, you know, like we're doing, we're doing this once a week or twice a week even to get, to come up with some plans, to get some ideas from folks about getting community involvement, about getting business involvement, about getting county, like everybody's got to be on board on this, everyone. We need to push it at the federal level. We need to push it on the state level. And then locally, we need to say, okay, we need a lot more bodies. We need more money. We need more space. Where can that all come from? And everyone's got to be in on this together. Like, we are definitely, we're not on the same boat, but we're definitely in the same storm. And so we're going to get people, people on board. So yes to a task force, yes to equity-driven, yes to looking at, if it's not actual district consolidation, although I bet if you put it on a special election mail-in ballot right now, it would pass, you know, 90%. But at least working together and kind of in joint agreements has got to happen, but it's got to happen fast. So someone's got to just put the pedal to the metal. And I don't see why that shouldn't be us.
It has to be us. As we talk about committees and task force, I am just getting into despair because they take time and everyone's pointing fingers and it's one more committee with one more binder that goes on the shelf. So I think, again, we make the road by walking and we do it. And so I'm starting to imagine as resolution is like, whereas, you know, COVID blah, blah, whereas it's hitting us, you know, disproportionately, blah, blah, whereas equity, blah, blah, blah. Therefore, Santa Rosa City Schools says that school cannot happen, you know, we need instructional minute change, we need school year change, we need learning spaces across the county, we need work, we need flexible work hours, we need rent forgiveness, we need, you know, unemployment boost, we need support for endocu fund since 15% of the population is there, you know, say what we need.
We need social workers. We need, we need an assessment, a testing, an assessment protocol that we have to do for all students and staff. So we need that. And let's not forget at the top of this, Director Close is correct. If we have partial students in school, the other half need to be in a clean environment that's supervised and fun and is helping to do the other classwork and has music and has PE activities. So we need space. We need people. We need the community to pony up Parks and Recs and all of those organizations that can help us with the supervising of kids and then the funding part of it that you said before.
So I'm going to go further. We need to not do state testing.
Put it on there. I don't, we need to just do our own formal assessments. We do not need to be doing.
Assess for learning, not autopsy results that we did, whatever.
That are biased. They are state assessments that are biased.
Biased. And what would happen?
Waste of resources.
What happened? Lori? Anne or Lori? Are we switching interpreters?
No, we didn't switch. We just need to make sure Marcella.
I am here.
Okay.
Marcella, you just need to stay muted, Marcella. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Director, Dr. Kitamura, I don't mind taking a stab at writing a resolution or Ed and Director Sheffield and Director Close and I could write a resolution and, you know, run it by you, draft it or you can draft it.
Yeah, and then I would get some other, I actually really like legal counsel to look at, our own legal counsel to take a look at it. And because I really wanted to start off with what Director Moneary talked about was we have statistics. I want to paint the picture of what we're dealing with in Sonoma County and really call out the disparity in who has actually been affected by the virus.
Okay, I am hearing from Lori that we have a public comment. We have a hand raised and I would like to kind of reopen public comment since we didn't get any. So Lori, moderator, we have a public comment, I think.
We do. We're so excited. We have a public comment now. This person's name is given as ASD. So I'm going to unmute your microphone on my end. Please make sure your microphone's unmuted and please state your name for the record before you make your comment. So if you signed in as ASD, you had your hand raised.
Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you now. Please state your name.
Wonderful. Hi, I'm Amy, my full name, Amy Duggan, and I have kids in the district and I work in a, in one of the schools in the, in the city, in the, you know, one of the feeder schools. And I just, I'm so excited to hear the conversation happening tonight. I love, I'm just so happy to hear such revolutionary conversation because we've needed it for such a long time and if not now, when, right? So, you know, at my school, when Governor Newsom was saying that, you know, well, maybe we'll just start school in July, all the teachers at my site were like, well, don't think, oh, there's unions. And then during a community advisory committee, you know, kind of like a town hall matrix kind of thing, there was this conversation going on about how, you know, unions are going to need to work together, whether it's representing administrators or teachers or classified, you know, we're going to need to have like a complete rebuilding from the ground up and all working together, which is exactly what I was hearing Dr. Kitamura and the rest of you, President Fong and the rest of you saying. And I'm very heartened. I'm heartened to hear that because our children have deserved, you know, more than just talk that we value them as a society. They deserve the funding behind that. And, you know, things need to change for, you know, for our very lives and for our children's future. So I just, I applaud you all. I thank you all. I am so very happy to hear all that you're doing and such heartfelt conversation regarding inequity and race and disproportionality and for us to take a look at our privilege if we're not feeling as affected. So, and disability. I think that's really hitting that community very difficult, very, you know, lots of challenges as well to access their learning. So thank you so much and I'm excited to hear more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duggan. And June 3rd would be our town hall and if you bring this back to your own district, that would be even better.
You bet. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, moderator?
Would anyone else like to raise their hand at this time? I see no other hands raised. Maybe we'll give it one moment. President Fong, that's it. No hands raised.
All right, so I'm going to bring this to a close and much, much work to be done. And Dr. Kitamura, you and I will work together on the legal and drafts and we'll bring it back, like, soon, like immediately, like maybe, I don't know. This can't wait.
Yeah, well, we want it ready, well, we want it to be reviewed and ready for the June 3rd meeting as a draft. It is my, would be my recommendation.
Last comments, board members on this, anything? Director Sheffield.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to when Jen was speaking about time, the timing of this, and we really don't have a whole lot of time. And I, you know, listening to all of the comments, listening to public comment as well, my brain was kind of spinning about how and what type of action that can be taken. And we talked about, you know, resolution, yes, absolutely. What power does the resolution have? I think timing-wise, because of what's being proposed at the state, because we know that we're facing economic uncertainty, I think it's time that we actually fire a shot, calling out the governor. Because every time we go into an economic slump or a recession at the state level, the first thing that's cut is education, health, human services, social services. And some of them never are restored. So if we're talking about an uncertainty in, of, you know, economically, we're talking about an uncertainty of what the future of our schools are going to look like. And here we have all these great proposals, but it all goes back to funding. So yeah, I think it would be great to continue moving forward, having the discussion on the 3rd about a resolution and what should be included in this resolution. But I think we should write a letter to the governor. I think we should print it in the paper. I think that's our first shot that we fire. I think we try to get CSBA of the districts on board. We try to get CTA on board. We have voices to contribute to this and we do it very quickly. And we are very directed in the way that we want to do it. And, sorry, I'm being distracted by a dancing six-year-old who needs to be in bed. I'll stop there.
No, but that is absolutely right. And I'm, sorry, Lori, and this is the conversation we've been kind of having behind the scenes as well, is like, this has to be a, we're not opening unless, and it's got to come from CTA and CSBA and AXA and the PTA. And there's got to be a few districts who are ready to really say, yeah, we're not opening unless. And that's a conversation that we had yesterday, today, Lori and I, like, who can get that group together? You know, you get LIA unified to say that and now we got something for real. But, and I said this at the last meeting, you know, getting CTA and CSBA to the table and you get PTA as well, that's, there's a lot of power.
That's, there's a lot of power in that. They need us to open and, and we need, we do, we do need to open. These kids need to be educated, we just got to do it safely. That's great. Uh, yes, I love it. Where is Rick? Rick, when the, the, if you're there or some, the, um, the budget, the state budget, is there any timing we need to look at that? Aren't they, isn't, I think legislator's in right now. Maybe, maybe, yeah, they're, they're, they're doing all the bills right now in the trailer. So I do think it would be wise for us. I think that's a great idea. I think that SRTA, yes, SRTA would be very much willing to sign on there. I don't know how big you want to get because then it's going to take a longer amount of time. Or does it have impact for, you know, little Santa Rosa up here who has suffered so many different things? Now this on top of it, you know, if, if we have our locals that are willing to be a part of it and maybe some other school districts here, I love that idea, Director Sheffield.
And then we leave it open at the end. If we can't get people to, to sign on because of time, we say, we invite you to sign on and add your name, you know, in the voice.
Yeah, put it on a, you know, a electronic petition type of thing.
Yeah.
Well, I love it.
I, I, I'm with you, Ed. I, it feels like, um, it feels like this UFW kid, like this is like a, an educational general strike. So I'm like, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. I can't imagine how SRTA wouldn't be psyched about being like, hell no, we're not going.
They're, they're ready to rock and roll with us. They're ready to rock and roll with us and CSN as well. And I think you guys should do videos. I, I think you guys should do short videos to get people fired up. Okay, so let's start drafting the letter.
All right, we will, we will draft a letter, but I do need to add one thing.
I still want to do the resolution.
Okay.
But let's, let's do the letter for now, like get it out immediately.
Okay, so what's important to me is that we break down the status quo, including not only how we do school, when we do school, but the pedagogy, what's happening, Diane, and those committees in terms of teaching and learning, opening it up, the community is the school now. You know, there's no more SAT. That's a test, that's a, that's a racist test that's going away thanks to our UCs. And so how do we continue to take advantage of, like no more testing possibly except for assessment for learning because teachers know better what their kids can do? And we need to continue to do that.
Yeah.
My cat's crying. Okay, all right, we are going to move on af, we're going to move on and we have a lot of work between now and Wednesday. And so we'll be talking. All right, thank you, everybody. And, um, this is a call to action, absolutely. We are moving on to E2. This is a declaration, it's action item, declaration of need for fully qualified educators. Dr. Kitamura. Who's talking?
Assistant Superintendent Specter will be presenting this item. And I said, uh, we're all, we're going to be haiku about it.
This is the legal mechanism that we use to ensure that we can hire qualified staff in high needs areas, um, if and when we need to, such as math, science and Spanish. Without this, should we have that need, then we would have to come back to the board. And so, um, we would ask that there would be a motion and approval of this action.
I turn it over to the board. Can entertain a motion?
Second.
Okay, that was Omar Medina and it was Jill McCormick? No, it was Elgray de La Cruz. Lori, may we have a vote?
Director Medina? Director Medina?
I said aye.
Okay. Director de La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Monary?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close? President Fong?
Aye. Thank you, that motion passes. Thank you very much. And we are moving on to, uh, action item E3. We'll all pay attention to this one. Third interim fiscal report for 2019-20 and information on the 2021 May revision.
Yes, so to really, you know, um, hit the ball, the home run and to really press the point about where we are fiscally and the needs that we have as a district, I turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Anton.
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, members of the board. Along with me tonight in my virtual presentation is Joel Dantos, who just popped up on the screen. And we are, we actually are doing a combination presentation tonight with the May revision information, uh, as well as the third interim report. Many, many comments tonight since the beginning of the meeting with, with budgets in peril, need for additional funds. And it's all true, uh, but right now we have to look at the reality of what came out in the May revision that's going to impact our budget. A little bit right now, but more, more importantly for 2021 and beyond. One of the things I can say about this before we, we get going is the only thing certain at this point about the numbers we're presenting or the, uh, May revision is that it's uncertain and seemingly changing every single day. Between, uh, you know, Wednesday and, uh, as early as yesterday or as late as yesterday, uh, we were still continuing to see changes in, um, how organizations that we support, such as CASBO, AXA, um, School Services of California are still coming out with their interpretations of what some of the language meant in the May revision, uh, which is causing, strife, not only in Santa Rosa, but throughout the state as school districts prepare for, the inevitable of a financial position that was worse than the recession of 2008, 09. So with that, I will share my screen and get into the presentation. So as, as we go through this, um, we've pared down a lot of information and brought, uh, what we feel is some of the most important that we know right now. We know, and we put it in the presentation, that right now, uh, California is projecting a over $54 billion deficit, uh, with approximately an $18 billion reduction to education. Another thing that we often see, or we've seen more lately than normal, uh, is the type of economic recovery that is anticipated. And I can tell you about four weeks ago, there was still hope for a V recovery, which would be a sharp decline and then build right back up quickly. No one's talking about a V-shaped recovery any longer. And you'll see several references through the slides. We refer to either, uh, U-shaped recovery, uh, or an L-shaped recovery. There's a slide that we'll talk about at the end of the May revision update. It shows the L-shaped recovery from the 2008 Great Recession, uh, that took almost a decade to quote unquote, restore funding, which it never really did. So as we go through this, uh, please keep in mind that some of the numbers that we'll share tonight and some of the ideas that were, uh, written in the May revise will change dramatically, uh, at the time of budget adoption in June, uh, and ultimately with the governor signing it, uh, before June 30th. This is, uh, interesting that with what California is going through right now, uh, they're in a similar, similar situation to what school districts annually do, is we create a budget prior to the California state budget being adopted, uh, and then we make major revisions. We anticipate that the state of California will also make major revisions this year after July 1, uh, specifically due to the, uh, personal income tax filing deadline extended to July 15th. So California will be passing, uh, its budget with revenue projections as well. So once those are realized, uh, we anticipate coming back for probably one of our most important 45-day budget revisions, uh, at least in local memory. So problem 98 is where school districts receive the majority of their funding. You can see, uh, in blue, the projection of funding to education in January of, uh, 78.4 billion in 1819 to finalize that year, 81.6, uh, for this year and 84 billion for next year. At the May revision, you can see how those numbers have been drastically altered, uh, in terms of, uh, a minimum guaranteed funding to education. So in a simpler chart, uh, the LCFF funding change in January was a positive plus $1.2 billion towards education. Uh, at the May revision, they're now projecting negative 6.5 billion, uh, and lowering the minimum guarantee, as you can see in the middle of the slide. Uh, one, one thing that's important, school districts, uh, on an annual basis depend on cost of living adjustments. In most school districts, it takes three to three and a half percent, uh, to go year to year with step and column and other operational cost increases. At the January budget, it was projected to be a 2.29% COLA. Uh, at the May revision, uh, they did raise the COLA to 2.31, uh, but they did suspend it, so resulting in zero positive COLA adjustment for us. When we look at this, uh, and the suspension of the COLA at zero, uh, we're really looking at about a 10% cut across the board, uh, including categorical programs. The deficit factor, uh, is being applied after COLA was applied, uh, so it, it doesn't look quite like 10% to LCFF, uh, but certainly, uh, anytime you have, uh, negative numbers coming into school funding creates a situation that, uh, is not good, knowing that most school districts, uh, do not have massive reserves to carry through economic downturn. So beyond just COLA for, uh, our base funding, uh, COLA has also been suspended on special education, child nutrition and foster youth, to name a couple other areas. Joel, do you want to talk about the?
Yeah, so this is a great slide, I think, as we talk about COLA. What does that mean? How does this affect us? Rick just said, you know, we're looking at big cuts. What does that mean to us at the district level? So this slide shows, you know, the 2.31% COLA and then the May revise has said, you know, additional 10% cut. Well, what does that mean? So if you see this chart here, our school district gets its state funding based on ADA, average daily attendance. So if we have one day of attendance, we get, for example, here, you see K through three, we get a different level of funding for the K through three grade span, the fourth through sixth grade span, the seven through eight grade span and the nine through 12 grade span. As you can see, current year, we get this level of funding here in the second column per ADA. I'll give you an idea, we have about, this year, we're budgeting about 13,880 ADA. So, but that's in all of our grade levels together. So if you average those together, you can come up with an idea of how much state funding we're going to get. Then, as you can see here, they're going to say, okay, we have a base level of funding from the prior year. COLA cost of living adjustment is a percent applied to that prior year per ADA funding to come up with your next year or, you know, your next budget year per ADA funding. So as you can see here, the governor's May revision included, okay, we're going to go ahead with the 2.31 COLA, but we're going to take an additional 10% cut for a net factor of a negative 7.92% funding. And you can see, follow the chart here, you can see the COLA is added, comes up to 178 for K3 to get the new base grant for the next year. Then you include the 10% reduction. You can see that is 788 at K through three and 954 at nine through 12. So then you get next year's projected per ADA funding. For example, 7092 in K through three and 8590 in nine through 12. So if you look, we're losing about $788 up to $954 based on the inclusion of the COLA. But if you're looking at the 1920 base grant, moving into 2020-21 base grant, we're taking a funding reduction of about $600 per ADA, up to about $800, something close to that per ADA, nine to 12. So that shows the per ADA reduction in our funding and what we're projecting for next year. And when, when we get further into the presentation, we're going to show you the impact that has on our budget and how that, you know, how we're, that'll result for us. But, uh, this slide gives a good example, I think, of how to apply the COLA and understanding these terms of how we're funded. And one thing I think that is important on this slide is, you know, this note that says, these reductions would be triggered off if the federal government provides sufficient funding to backfill the cuts. That's what the state has communicated through their May revision in their budget. So, again, I think this is the worst case scenario. Federal government, now this is, so we, we've got, you know, uh, some federal money included in the budget with the CARES Act and so forth, but this would be outside of that. And I don't, we don't have any of that budgeted in this budget or in this presentation. That's just a note. I don't know where the governor is with his thinking behind that. I absolutely think this is exact, this is the time to advocate for school funding to the governor, saying this is not acceptable. I think the governor has an agenda to become president. So I think anybody who advocates for that, for that, you know, is who he's going to, please. And that was told to us by, uh, School Services of California in their presentation, you know, we've gone through from the January budget proposal, they said, you know, this is different. Governor Brown was the same way in his first term. And in his second term, he started giving all new budget money to school districts. So right now Gavin Newsom doesn't look like he's giving new budget money. Not that there is any budget money after this, but before the COVID, he said, you know, he wasn't necessarily looking at giving new budget money to school districts, but it was our time as school districts to advocate for this funding to school districts. So I absolutely think this is the time to do that because this, this is, I don't know if it's a realistic budget, it's May revision, but this is, this is, this is really hard to, to swallow. So I mean, that, I think this is a good slide and I think that, that's what I have to say about this, Rick.
Thank you. Uh, I, I do just want to, real quickly, the, the, if the federal government provides funds, this will be triggered off. That's, uh, said three or four different ways within the May revision. And this relates directly to the HEROES Act, which I also heard mentioned earlier, uh, that is, I know, facing a tough battle, uh, in DC right now. Moving on, uh, we did get a little bit of relief with Calpers and Calstars buy downs. $2.3 billion that was, uh, in January destined for long-term debt relief. And Pers Answers, uh, is being repurposed for short-term school district relief with employer contributions. Although 2% is great and it does help us, we'll take it wherever we can get, you know, it's roughly about $450,000 a year, uh, in savings. So, uh, it helps, but it doesn't, uh, negate the other cuts, uh, that are scheduled to take place per the May revision. You want to take this one, Joel?
Yeah, so, so this is, these are some measures that were included in the May revision that the governor came out with that recognized, so the governor recognized it, there's some you know, not so positive things as far as, you know, the fiscal status, you know, the fiscal state of this budget. So, he said, we're going to add some relief measures. And these are the ones that were included in the May revision. Exemption from deferrals for hardship reasons. That is, so, included in this May revision are revenue deferrals, meaning the state aid deferrals. We get those monthly, I mean, I'm going to say average about three to five million dollars per month. Well, in a recession, the government, the state is able to defer revenues. For example, in the May revision, they have a, they have the, this current year's nineteen twenty, a June revenue that we're supposed to receive, they're deferring that till July. So, we're still going to get the same amount of money, it's just they're deferring it to July. Well, we aren't deferring our expenditures till July, we still owe all of our vendors and employees all their, all their money in June. So, that gives us, you know, a cash flow issue. For example, we might have to take out loans, not, you know, we've done a cash flow analysis this year, that's not going to affect us, but in the case we would have to take out loans, that would create an additional expense to us. Now, next year is where we need to be mindful of this, because in next year's budget, the governor is looking at deferring our revenues for April, May, and June. So, now that looks over fifteen million dollars that we won't get until, you know, the, the new year opens in July. So, we'll have to be mindful of that. The ability to exclude the state's on behalf employer payments and the return to maintenance account. So, that, in our books, we carry a a, a report, fiscal report for our STIRS and PERS liability. We don't make those expenditures. We just report it in our general fund, so the state can add up all these reports from all the school districts, and then they can know their own liability for PERS and STIRS. So, we collect on our books. So, that would be, for Santa Rosa, that would be about a couple hundred thousand dollar savings. Now, we're looking at, we'll get into this more, but I mean, we're really working with our maintenance department to establish that can be absorbed. If you recall, in the last fiscal stabilization plan, we utilized that budget to move some salaries in there. So, and we'll get into that more as it comes down to our budget. But, um, so, the subject to public hearing, the ability to increase internal inter-fund borrowing limit. So, this comes back kind of related to the deferrals, helps us with our cash flow. We, you know, we need to have all funds cash positive. That's really the extent of that. The authority for special education staff to use technology-based options to serve students. Use proceeds from property sales for one-time general fund purposes. I don't extend the transitional kindergarten teacher credential requirement from August first. So, this is the list that came out in May. I think there'll be more added to this in June. So, we'll just have to be mindful of these types of local relief measures, but it's, it's not a lot of relief for a pretty tough situation we're in. That's, you got anything more to add, Eric?
Yeah, I, I will just echo just Joel's comment. The omnibus trailer bill for education right now is being negotiated. So, we expect this list to increase to help school districts more, including instructional days and instructional minutes could be a change to that. There's also discussion about some other types of funding or ways to fund schools that may be in those trailer bills and adopted with the budget. Here, at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about the recoveries V U and L. This slide simply shows when the Great Recession of, starting in two thousand seven and eight started, we certainly didn't have a U shape or a V shape recovery. We had a prolonged L-shaped recovery. The blue line represents purchasing power that school districts were going to get back to through the LCFF, showing that we never quite made it. And now with the economic downturn, based on the COVID nineteen pandemic, our actual purchasing power is continuing, is going to continue to go down. We've made several comments about COLA and forecasting. This slide shows, you know, tells a great story about what we're not going to have, at least projected in the near future. The Department of Forecast, which School Services generally uses and some other entities use to help school district with their forecast and recommendations, along with the LAO showing both a U shape and L-shaped forecast, depending on how recovery goes. School Services is significantly more conservative than the Department of Finance. But even School Services right now, as well as FICMAT and other entities are recommending projecting zero percent COLA for twenty twenty-one and the two out years. As of right now, I believe we shared at the last board meeting, FICMAT. FICMAT is also recommending that when we do this, even in out years, to look at not only zero percent COLA, but looking at the deficit factor as well at negative two and negative ten, so that we can be prepared as we move forward. With that, those were the major highlights of the May revision. Are there any questions on the May revision or clarifications we can make before we go into third interim? Seeing none, I will move on to third interim. So, it, it's kind of interesting right now, not in a good way, but hopefully this actually helps us as a school district and an organization because of our qualified status at second interim. There is a requirement to complete a third interim or end of year projection report to the county. With this coinciding with what we're going through in budget cuts, gives us an opportunity to look at where we stand today in preparation for the discussions that we're going to have for our return to school committees, what we need to do as an organization to make sure that we're fiscally solvent and come up with plans for that. And in preparation to bring additional information back to you at the first July meeting and to bring the budget back for adoption at the second meeting in June. So, some of these slides are familiar. We are at the circled red now, third interim because of our second interim certification. We'll quickly move into budget adoption. And as I mentioned earlier, this summer's budget revision is probably one of the most important, or if not the most important, in at least the last eleven or twelve years, considering at the, considering the money that we are expecting not to get at this point going into next school year. So, I've got over this, required to submit the report for financials through April thirtieth, and we have to turn it into the county by June first. So, when we developed the third interim report, we got to factor in all of the assumptions that we had at second interim. And then we got to throw all those assumptions away and bring in the new assumptions that were received with the May revision. So, over the course of the last week, we, we did some major updating to our assumptions. I am going to let Joel go through, go through this in brief to give some highlights, but one I wanted to point it out, wanting to point out before he goes into some of the other assumptions is enrollment. We are in declining enrollment and have been for a number of years in Santa Rosa City Schools. The state in all four school entities is in declining enrollment, elementary, high school, unified districts, and charter schools for the first time ever that I'm aware of, if that's happened. We are projecting additional enrollment decrease based on the information that we are receiving. So, on top of the projections that we had at second interim, we are, right now, we are projecting another negative one point five percent decrease across the board for for our schools. That number will be adjusted throughout the summer and going into August as we get more enrollment processed and we start seeing which students are going to show up and where. But that's very important to understand that not only are we being crippled with declining funding, we also are looking at declining enrollment in excess of what we projected just a couple of months ago.
Rick, we have to make an interpreter switch.
You, President Pham. Marcella, are you ready to switch?
I am ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me escuchen? Laurie, are we ready?
Just one more minute, one more second.
Me escuchen?
Okay, we're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, we also put into the board cover, and I apologize for not putting it in the presentation. We're looking at declining enrollment similar to the year after the Tubbs fires and then projecting recovery. Still in decline enrollment, but recovery from that year for the out years at this point. As I mentioned, we'll be updating that as information becomes available. With that, I'll ask Joel to go over a few of the key budget factors and assumptions that we noted in the board cover and presentation.
All right, thanks, Rick. Yeah, so, as we look at this third interim report, this is for two thousand nineteen twenty. So, this report goes for two thousand nineteen twenty plus two future years. And the governors may revision and their budget proposal, they, this is for their next year. So, it would be twenty twenty-one through twenty-two, twenty-three. So, when we look for that, when we adopt our budget in June to add that, that, you know, this is this year, the fourth year, but the third year to the governor's budget we're looking at. So, as you can see here, you know, two thousand nineteen twenty, we had the budget act of a three point two six percent COLA that we're continuing. You know, we had our STIRS and PERS rates, and now you can see our third interim for next year and the year after, we're assuming the, you know, the School Services recommendation of zero COLA, the recommendation for STIRS and PERS. And like Rick said, we have our updated enrollment projections for next year. You know, for two thousand twenty twenty-one, after this pandemic, we increased our assumptions for declining enrollment, similar to the figures that came after the Tubbs fire, like Rick mentioned. You can see we're going from down from fourteen fifty-five down to under fourteen thousand two hundred, a pretty steep decline. And then we all, we do include a projected decrease in enrollment for the third year after, back to something more in the lines of not, not after a pandemic or a, you know, a disaster. So, now we'll see how though these numbers affect our budget, if you want to move on to the next slide, Rick. So, we included in this some of the dollar volumes that are affecting the budget. So, let's first look at the revenues. We'll start with the revenues, and then we'll go over the expenditures. So, you can see these line items. First, how does the governors may revise and our projected declining enrollment affect our overall budget? As you can see, in two thousand twenty twenty-one, it's going to relate to a decrease in state funding of over sixteen million dollars. In two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, it's going to have an effect of over twenty-two million dollars of lost revenues. I wouldn't say lost revenues, re-projected revenues. Then, then again, we, this, since this is for current year, you know, we had our actual attendance, average daily attendance come in in P two, and we lost about fourteen students. Now, all of our ADA for our school districts, for our district schools is based on prior year. For our county-operated schools and our non-public schools, that funding is based on current year. So, we have a couple hundred kids, over a couple hundred kids in those programs. This year's attendance was down, about fourteen kids. So, we included about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar hit. Our scope attendance was, was was pretty, pretty down, and I, we just need to monitor that going forward. You know, we have, since the COVID was shut down, we haven't been getting lease rental and different facility use money that we're budgeting. So, we reduced that budget by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Daycare fees, loss in daycare fees, about almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Here, we did get money from the state in state Senate Bill one seventeen, COVID relief funding of about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, those are the major revenue things that are included in this third interim. If you want to go to the next slide, Rick.
Could I ask a quick question on that real quick?
Yeah.
I, I, I thought I remember seeing something about our ADA was not going to be impacted because of, you know, the whole distance learning thing that they were going to use, like some, some prior figure, is that?
Great question. So, here's, here's what happened with that. Our, every year, we have three major attendance reports. Our P one that is through, we, we turn it in in December. Our P two, which is through April, we turn it in in May, then our annual. And so, and predominantly, we get funded on P two. So, the way that they protected us from loss of the ADA this year is they made P twos only through, what is it, the end of February?
February twenty-ninth.
February twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Yeah, as opposed to through the end of March. So, they gave us, they, 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 they made the dividing factor of days only through that. So, so, everything else is not applied to the funding, up to the, to the funding through P two. And that'll be, so, next year will be the greater of the current year through February or next year through March, and, you know, unless something else happens. And we're protected, but we'll still only get the state funding. So, we'll still lose six hundred dollars. If nothing changes, we have the same ADA next year, we would still lose six hundred dollars because we're not protected from the overall loss in funding. We're just protected from the loss in ADA. So, we're still going to lose the six hundred dollars per ADA.
Yeah, I think that's a really important differentiation is in normal years, I'll say non-COVID years, when you're in the midst of declining enrollment, you get to use the prior year's ADA. It ensures that you get funded at the same ADA level, but it does not ensure the same funding that's allocated will be given, just your percentage stays the same. Right now, this is of great concern across the state in terms of how they're going to protect school districts in light of what looks like the current budget realities with even discussions and groups advocating for funding next year on enrollment versus average daily attendance, especially with the uncertainty of how school's going to start, whether it be the hybrid brick and click or just the simply the click method that was discussed earlier. Those are all conversations that we expect to hopefully have some answers to at budget adoption.
Can I ask another question just along this line? You know, like, looking at the loss of facility use fees, loss in daycare fees. I'm, I'm curious in, in, well, definitely there's loss of the income, but in terms of like the budget, are there also like maybe savings associated with whatever's going on around that? And I imagine, is that reflected somewhere else?
There are some, some savings that we do put in, I believe. Some that we're still with. Some that we're still listing out at the bottom of this slide. You know, utilities, some other year-end savings projections. We're just now starting to get utility bills for this time period, so we'll, these are true projections at this point, based off of some historical perspective and talking with some of our service providers. You know, it's really tough to say we continue to pay employees during this time period, so our labor costs were the same or higher in some cases to facilitate, especially custodial and CNS support for meal distribution. Although, although those come in Fund 13, which we're really focused on Fund 01 right now, they also had a loss of walk-up revenue on daily food sales as well, so there's impacts in multiple funds because of this. And we're still sorting out where we're going to find additional savings, especially from utilities and that type of thing, where less use results normally results in savings.
Yeah, so, and, and this slide shows what's included in the third interim in regards to the savings as well as increased expenses. And, and as of what we're projecting to, you know, to end the year on. And, and I think, you know, for example, we're looking at, you know, a reduction in salaries and of about $161,000. Now, we did take a pretty healthy look at that at second interim, so we were, you know, really projecting through the end of the year based on that, so, you know, an update on that. I mean, you know, we'll have to see how that ends, and, and we'll come back again with an update in June, and then, of course, as we close out the books for the unaudited actual report. This is the representation of the purrs and stirs effects in the future years that, you know, came in with the Budget Act that Rick talked about. So here's, here's another expense. So we've been putting money towards COVID relief, $184,000 in salaries. For example, we paid our classified staff that worked during that, we paid them time and a half, there was some other associated salary expenses. Here, here, you know, you're in savings for books and supplies and outlay. You know, we had some school supplies that were projected to be bought by the school budgets. We looked at all the entire general fund on one, and we, we reduced that budget by about $315,000. So more, but, but then there were more purchases for the COVID relief expenses. We looked at services and operating expenditures, we reduced the budget by about 145, a little over $145,000 here, Rick mentioned, about $100,000 projected reduction in utility costs, and then a little more COVID expenditures. So that's really the important factors that went into the third interim revenues and expenditures that are included in this report.
Moving forward, and when we look at financial status, you know, at second interim, we incorporated the fiscal stabilization plan part one that was approximately $10.5 million in current year and next year expenditure reductions. We'll have to continue on with that work, as I'm sure everyone took a peek at the multi-year projection already, knowing that we still had approximately 3.6 million in additional expenditure reductions to bind, if you will, as we move forward. And then some other things to keep in mind as we look at the numbers on the next couple of slides. You know, we've heard it many times tonight through board member comments, through SRTA report, through Dr. Kitamura. It's really, what is it going to take to open schools? And that's the big unknown right now. I, I think $20 or $30 million would be a great start for some of the things that we've talked about in order to provide not only resources but facilities to incorporate different modes of learning. One that we can, one accommodate and two that we can staff appropriately to, to make that happen. So there's going to be costs that are going to be factored in, into, in addition to the cuts that we have to make based on the expected funding levels. We have to be cognizant certainly about CSEA and SRTA negotiations. And then back to my original comments tonight, the uncertainty in education funding right now as we move forward, and then declining enrollment. Director Close?
Thanks, Rick. When you say $25, $30 million for staffing or facilities and staffing, what if there were, it was only staffing? What's the proportionate that, that you, and obviously, there's an estimate, we won't hold you to this, but if there were no facilities cost and it was just staffing, what would that be?
It would depend on what the model turned out to be, and, and so I, it's hard to speculate on that right now. Though, you know, I can think of, you know, it seems like a million variables right now to that, no pun intended, to a million dollars, but you know, there, there's so much that we're working on right now and working together with the groups that were discussed early there with the re, with school reopening committee or return to school committee, and looking at different modes and models to have learning in, you know, three or four different scenarios. So really, I think where, where costs for employees would be if we have to provide childcare, if we're in some hybrid model or a distance learning model as the economy tries to recover by opening up businesses that have been closed for since March, and they're expecting workforce to come back to work, but they don't have childcare or other necessary services where they're now having to make a choice between going to work or, or watching their children, especially lower-aged children that require more supervision than perhaps a high school student. So that's something that needs to be taken into account, but another thing with facilities is there's not, we don't have a lot of free facility as it is now and requirements that are in place with that in order to house school or childcare, you know, relaxation of the field act or other appropriate measures where we don't have to have certification to have some of those additional services if need be. So as we go through this and we get more information, we'll be happy to bring back some, I'll say speculative numbers on the different, I'll say, programs that are being considered as we go through this process. But I, I know it's not going to be inexpensive, especially with in, or in light of what's happening with the proposed budget at this point in time.
Rick, would you give us
I would, sorry, I, I, you know, we can, I, I think are the most expensive model would be brick and click. So we can do some calculations on, on that. I think that I've already talked to Dr. Harrington about getting field act waivers, I told him that today. He just needs to make that happen because in, it'll take some time, and we know we're going to need those other spaces, and those other spaces are going to need to have a field act, field act waiver. Sorry, Dr., sorry, President Fong, go ahead.
Rick, would you give us the timeline, just really a quick, short timeline about when the Budget Stabilization Committee is going to be making more cuts and how, what, how many more cuts and what, by when? What's our calendar?
So right now, we met with the Budget Advisory Committee last Thursday night. We're meeting again on Tuesday at this point. We have a meeting scheduled in as we receive more information. We're going to be doing some work to bring some additional information back to the Budget Advisory Committee and some initial thoughts on where additional cuts can come from, along with their input on that. We have another meeting scheduled right now for the 16th as well with a placeholder on the weekend between that, if we need to reconvene again in order to bring that to the board. So we'll be bringing information back to the board on the, I believe it's June 10th meeting. I don't know if it'll be a fiscal stabilization plan part two as we saw in part one at that point, but this will be an ongoing process from this point forward as we look to address these issues.
So are they going to be looking at the 3.6 million more we have to do and beyond that, or just the 3.6?
No, it's beyond that. 3.6 is kind of off the table at this point. It's now, I believe, 9.7 that we have to address immediately.
Board members, any other questions before I open it for public comment?
We still have a couple more slides, Director, or President Fong, if that's okay. So moving forward, Joel, you want to take this real quick, go over this in the multi-year projection?
Yeah, so this is our current year, 19, 20, 30 interim. It goes, you know, it includes all the items we've talked to, talked about in tonight, and it also includes all the items we've been working on this year, including the fiscal stabilization plan part one. As you can see, and, and moving into this year, you know, we knew that we had moved into a COLA-only environment in revenue, meaning there wasn't going to be increases from the gap percentage, and there was no one-time money included in this governor's budget, and so, and we had just settled negotiations last year, so we, we were, you know, we are projecting about a $10 million deficit when revenues over expenditures. Now, this is a combined general fund, so we've got the both, both restricted and unrestricted budgets in here when we're, so we're drawing down about $4 million restricted reserves, but the unrestricted deficit is about a little over $5 million. So, you know, moving into this year, we were deficit spending about $5 million in the general fund after, you know, our current year expenses. So that is really what this is showing. You want to go on to the next slide, Rick? So here's what we're looking at now. This is our third year, multi-year projection, and, you know, we met with the Budget Advisory Committee, they've seen this, they know our new charge. We're going to meet with them again next week. As you can see, before third interim, we weren't planning on having any future unified fiscal stabilization measures until the 21-22 year. Now you saw our loss in revenues, and you can see we need to make a $9.7 million reduction next year. Now, that's just to meet the 3% minimum reserve. So we're going to draw down more of our reserves next year, meaning we're going to still deficit spend over 17, close to $18 million, which is not, which is challenging. So then, if we do find the nine, you know, we need, we have to find the $9.7 million, we have to get the June budget. I mean, everything that's been coming out is saying, what we got in May is not reliable enough to create a budget. These are the assumptions included in the May revision. So this is what's included in our budget projections. Again, I'll say it again, I think the more we advocate Governor Newsom to fund school districts, the better we are. This is the time everybody is to do that. But the way it is projecting, I think we were on a call today and a school district said, "We have a healthy reserve and we can't make it in the third year." What are we going to do? This was just that, the association presentate webinar that we were on. So, you know, moving forward, so that, again, that slide of the third year, if it rolls over, it's not 30 million, it's 21 million, but still, I mean, that's really all I have to say about that slide.
It really goes back to ongoing cuts, keep going on, right? That we've talked about at other budget presentations. And this is showing that we would need our minimum reserve with those cuts with a zero balance in 2021-21-22. Also important to note on this, this will be the last time that we see the multi-year projection through 21-22 at budget, budget adoption in June. We'll move into the 22-23 school year as our out year and move everything, move everything to the left on this. So just real quick on these, just as a reminder, this was our total revenue versus expenditure graph in December of 2019. This was our revenue expenditure in March of 2020, taking into account the nearly $10.5 million of expenditure reductions. And with the May revision, this is our new graph with expected revenues sharply declining with expenditures doing the same based on future fiscal stabilization measures, as noted on the multi-year projection. This slide shows our projected ending balance in Funds 9 through 67 going, going forward into budget adoption. Next steps are the Budget Advisory Committee, Fiscal Stabilization Plan Part Two, the budget public hearing as well as budget adoption. A, a point made on the call today with John Gray, who some of you know, he said in 2008 that the recession came very quick, and there wasn't much time to act. He said this came 10 times quicker than 2008, and the reactions are happening at a time that aren't advantageous to school districts in terms of time of year and preparation for the budget. And he also made note that, and I'll put it in our own terms, we're not the only district going through this. This is a statewide issue at this point. He would be surprised if many districts in California could show solvency in the third year after the May revision and suspected that a majority are going to have problems in the second year as we're illustrating in our multi-year projection right now. So please know that this is not unique to Santa Rosa. It's, it's, it's unfortunate for us, but it's something that we'll all have to work together to get back to where we can operate, not under this cloud of uncertainty. So with that, I'll be happy to turn it back over to the board and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I'm going to ask for questions only right now? No hands up? Moderator, it's time for public comment, if we have any?
Rick, can you stop sharing?
Yep.
Okay, so now we're looking for public comment on this item only, item E3, the Third Interim Fiscal Report. If you'd like to make public comment on this item, please raise your hand at the bottom I see no hands, so last call for hands to comment on this item, E3. And President Fong, no hands.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion? I see no hands. Director Medina? Director Medina?
I'm like, yeah, can you hear me? I'd just like to move that we accept the Third Interim Fiscal Report for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and the information on the 2020-2021 May revision.
My second. Thank you. That was moved by Director Medina and seconded by Director De La Cruz. Laurie, may we have a vote, please?
Director Medina? Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Mc
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong? Aye. Good. Passes. Thank you very much for your work. Deputy Superintendent Edson and Joel, are you Director? No. Yes? Dantos?
Executive Director of Fiscal Services.
And I would second what you said, Director Dantos, about, yes, we need to speak to Governor Newsom and just tell him what's up. Okay, we'll take that message to him from you.
I'd also just like to say that I love it when Joel is fired up. Just really appreciate it.
It's been hard.
More, Joel, more.
I can say one more thing. It's been hard from the fiscal world, going to these workshops and listening to these things happen. But I was so energized by those valedictorian speeches. I felt like, oh, we can do this. They got, they're going to get us through this.
Thank you.
Good work, Joel.
We're moving on to item E4. It's a resolution for project development agreement for analysis of energy conservation.
Lori, if you could promote Scott Meesum to the panelists, I would appreciate it.
Yes, will do. If I locate him here.
Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Great. I'll go ahead and share my screen again. Good evening, Superintendent Kudimer, President Fong, members of the board. Tonight, we're here to talk about a development agreement. I have Scott Meesum from SCIZERCO on the Zoom as well that will be available to answer any questions about this that may come up through the presentation. I think it's very appropriate, in some ways, that we're talking about this after the budget discussion as we're continuing to look for ways for energy efficiency, not only to help the environment, but also as a cost savings measure going forward. So this development agreement is a path to introduce additional energy efficiencies in Santa Rosa City schools. With this, we're really looking at the energy savings that could be, sorry, electricity costs and energy savings that come. As you may recall, we've gone through the Prop 39 projects for energy efficiency at about half of our school sites. And through the work with SCIZERCO and PG&E, we were able to secure on-bill financing for approximately the other half of our school sites not qualified for Prop 39. So we were able to outfit our entire school district that will result in substantial savings over the course of the next decade and a half or so on an annual basis. Right now, as a baseline model, we're estimating about 2.5 million in electricity costs with savings from Prop 39 and the PG&E on-bill financing at a current rate of about 25 cents a kilowatt hour. So we have an opportunity to look at additional measures such as solar and battery backup and regeneration through this program and looking into lock rates in over a period of time. As some of you are aware, we do have solar panels at a few of our school sites. And the contract that we have with those solar panels that was signed, I believe, in 2008 or 2006 actually has increasing electricity costs for us over the term of the contract, which expires in 2028, I believe. So with that, we're looking at this project to develop into a solution where we have a fixed rate over the term of the contract and eventually increasing energy independence from our utility providers and also providing some backup power in the event, probably not if, but when another PG&E, PSPS occurs during the fire season in the fall of our school year. We're also looking at this from a zero capital outlet from the school district. So this would be funded through the program as it operates after the development agreement is complete. Through the project, they'll identify additional energy saving measures. We've talked about solar panels at school sites, not only perhaps on roofs, which we're trying to stay away from in some cases because of the new roofs that were put on through the bond programs, but also as parking lot shade and the possibility of on-campus shade as well using some of these devices. Going through this process, Government Code 4217, because of the energy savings that we anticipate having, allows us to enter into this contract with SCIZERCO to move forward. Right now, we're looking to approve a development agreement where SCIZERCO will work to identify and design with the objectives of annual savings and fixed costs on our, fixed costs on us receiving electricity from the proposed solar panels that would be installed. This is pretty key to some discussions that we had with SCIZERCO. If the objectives of the plan are not met, we have no cost associated with this. The only cost to us, other than repaying based on the savings, would be as if we didn't enter into a contract at the conclusion of the development plan. As you may recall, SCIZERCO, as I mentioned, has been part of our Prop 39 work as well as our PG&E on-bill financing work that's already taken place throughout the district. So we would like to move forward with this development agreement to find out about the cost savings that we could incur and also potentially wind up funding sources with no cost to the district out of pocket with realizing real savings in the near term in light of our budget conditions. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Scott is available for questions as well.
I have a question. Looking at, you know, I don't know where we're at in terms of like how much energy could be produced or, or anything, but is there any, given our budget situation, is there any possibility that we get to a point where we produce more energy than we use? And if so, would there be any possibility of actually being able to gain revenue from excess energy?
Scott, do you want to take the higher points on that one? Because I know there is some, some buyback option and there is also selling back the energy from the battery storage as well. If I recall, I don't have that piece of paper in front of me.
Yes, thank you for the question. One of the things that we look at as an opportunity here is for the district to be able to produce electricity at times of day when the cost of the electricity is relatively cheap from the grid. So in current time of use rates, electricity, you know, at 10, 11, 12 o'clock is really cheap. And the opportunity to put that into a battery and then release the electricity back into the grid at the, you know, the hyper peak, which is starting now at about 4 o'clock until 9 o'clock, which would help the district from an economic standpoint. Presently, when you feed more electricity into the grid than you consume, the rate at which the district would be paid is really nominal. It would not be profitable from the standpoint of the infrastructure that needs to be built for the district to try to sell electricity. There are some legislation that's moving through the state that may change that. But at present, if you sold electricity in excess, you'd be making about three or four cents a kilowatt, but it would cost you somewhere around, you know, mid-teens to produce electricity.
And to follow up on that, is there, you know, Rick, I don't know if this might be something that we could look into, maybe some sort of, if we can get to that point, maybe partnership with like Sedum Clean Power or something? Or maybe we could get a better rate on a, on a return? But also, I'm curious in terms of like funding for upgrading equipment, like upgrading to like LED bulbs for lighting. I don't know to what extent the district has upgraded to LED throughout, but any possibilities of like being able to transition to that to be more energy efficient in terms of use in this?
Yeah, and that's the majority of work that's already taken place, Director Medina, or taking place through the Prop 39 and the PG&E on-bill financing. That was replacing a majority of the lights, including indoor and outdoor lights, with energy-efficient LED bulbs. And that's where we are going to realize some of that other savings. Zoom is weird with this. Right here, savings from Prop 39 and PG&E on-bill financing, estimated for next year and then anticipated for the following for a lot of part of next year fiscal year.
Sorry, Director Sheffield?
I just, you know, while we have Scott here on the beach, I wanted to just, you know, maybe make a couple of comments or a couple of questions because I know there was some confusion when we first began this partnership with SCIZERCO. And so, you know, some things that were stated, and I want to just underline or underscore that we already went through a competitive bidding process with this. Is this correct?
Yes, in order to select an energy services company for the Prop 39 work, a competitive process was performed by the district and we were selected under that. And then Government Code 4217 allows the district to engage a qualified energy services company as defined through a different public contracting code for the state of California. And SCIZERCO is in the pool of contractors for the state's Department of General Services thereby making us a qualified ESCO. So Government Code 4217 allows you to directly engage us. And then the competitive process it used for Prop 39 allowed you to use that as an establishment for the qualified ESCO to move forward with.
Okay, and then going, moving on to number two. When we began the contract, there was also some confusion around use of labor unions. And my understanding, can you, can you speak to that? Use of labor?
Sure. So for the lighting project, SCIZERCO is using IBW union electricians. We've had as many as 20 electricians on this job at one time. Project's been going very well. We've had very good success sourcing electricians to work on that project and their commitment is to do so.
Okay, so with this next step, going solar PV, again, we would be using IBW. I'm assuming we have IBW support?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was, you know, just the savings this brings. We're talking about the district having ongoing savings in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And maybe this is a question for Rick. What are, what is our annual dollar amount on energy consumption?
Right now, we have the baseline up on this slide, Director Sheffield, of about $2.5 million.
So, I mean, again, I, you know, just to underscore, underline the public audience that is, that is watching this about the savings. You know, this is, this is low-hanging fruit, but it's really tasty fruit, you know? I just see this as an opportunity that we probably should have, could have jumped on opportunities like this years ago. But now with the financial crisis that we're facing, but also knowing that we live in an area that is prone to natural disaster, crisis, wildfires. So thank you, Scott, for clarification and answering some of these questions. That's all I have.
Thank you for the opportunity to join tonight and thank you for the opportunity to work together with the district.
So we are going to, moderator, are there any public comments? Open for public comment.
Okay, so if you would like to make a public comment on this item, E4, please raise your hand, only if you want to comment on Agenda Item E4. Click the Raise the Hand at the bottom of your screen. And I see no hands. Last call for public comment on Agenda Item E4. President Fong, there are no hands raised.
Public comments closed. Thank you very much, moderator. And this is an action item. Resolution 2019/20-073.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2019-20073 for project development agreement for analysis of energy contribution. Thank you.
All right, that was Director Sheffield, seconded by Director De La Cruz. Lori?
That was, that was Director McCormick.
Director McCormick.
Thank you.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong? Aye. Okay, good. Thank you. We're moving on to consent items. I'm looking for consent items, F1.
Need to approve items F2 through F13?
Second.
That was Omar Medina and seconded by Ms. De La Cruz. Lori? Director Medina? Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong? Aye. Thank you. Those pass. And we are now moving to Item G1, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Board Meeting Held on May 13, 2020.
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Second.
Who was that? All right, so it was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Close. Lori? Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong? Aye. Are there any board member requests for information? All right, so before I bang this gavel.
Yay, 2020!
Yay! All right. We have work to do. We'll be in touch. See you soon. Good night, everybody.